Good morning.
Morning.
We will bring this, um, look session to order and this morning clerk to have any public comment, I believe we have one here who wants to sign up. Mr. Pierce, if you please come forth and present this morning and your subject matters. Can you read this? Communication between others, I think I believe that I have it. Um, Mr. Pierce, you already know that the rules of ability is important and you have three minutes of time. Give us your name and address and start.
I don't know why, I'm in a good mood this morning, but I just have, uh, good morning, Madam Chair of people here, Commissioners. Uh, I had a birthday last Thursday and it's a double-digit number, so you can take a guess which one it is. But, uh, sometime around midnight Saturday or Friday, I'm not sure which, I was kind of dozing off till the TV stays on all night. If it's quiet, you notice I go to sleep over here. Doesn't take long. So, I woke up to a bulldog-type, uh, drill sergeant hollering and screaming and he was marching up and down the dormitory of the prison and he said, "If you sit on the bed with dirty pants, you go in the box. And if you do this, you go in the box. And if you do this, you go in the box." And all Paul Newman is sitting down in the bed and he's just looking up at him and smiling. He says, "You got any problem with that?" "No, sir, no, sir." Well, you know, Paul Newman never gave up. And finally, they took him in front of the boss man and one of those prisoners down there in Alabama, Louisiana, and he said, "What we have here is a failure to communicate." Now, I want to tell you something. I know it's not me because every time I find something out, I bring it to you. But what we do have is something the grand jury said is a failure to communicate. And in a failure to communicate, it means that you do what you want to do. And it's time for y'all to take a lead in doing the suggestions of the grand jury and that is, Mr. Bussie needs to go, Ms. Fleming needs to go. Ms. Fleming, the last one she hired, she said she replaced by somebody. The gal that was up here said she's not going to be bullied and not going to be harassed and all this stuff. She introduced herself. And she lives in Jonesboro. She's still owner of a smoke shop, okay? Vapers and all that stuff. So she's got a good job because she's trying to kill them and then she can embalm them. So, she's still over there in Jonesboro, but she comes over here every now and then.
Mr. Pierce, that was out of order when you said, uh, you heard that this lady was trying to kill. You can't say that, don't.
Okay.
Just keep going.
Well, she owns a business that is vacant.
Okay, then just keep going. Okay.
Okay. Well, when some of these people come up here and tell me that I'm out of order, I wish you'd do that for them too.
Okay. I'll try to be consistent.
All right, now, here she is earning $900 to come over here. The coroner's still not doing her job even after the judge said to do it. Somebody here, as a matter of fact, it was me that brought the attention that she bypassed Human Resources. Forget about him. I run my own job. So she hired him and she hired, and then I asked for the application and guess what? A couple of months later, they said, "Come over here and fill it out, but we don't have one for you." So three months later, or two months, she goes up and fills one out. Gas. Listen to this crazy gas.
Mr. Pierce, you've exceeded your time. You've exceeded. I gave you a few more minutes. You've exceeded.
I'm out?
Yeah, you've exceeded your three minutes. Yes, sir.
One day I'm going to get on the agenda and give you all a half an hour.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Pierce. We appreciate your contribution to county government. Um, I believe that's all of our comments this morning. Board of Commissioners, we have a pretty robust meeting this morning and I said that I guess they wanted my administration and I guess that has carried over, but it proves that we are doing some things and getting some things done. But, um, if you, Board of Commissioners, just take a peek large in the minutes, approval of the minutes, and you'll take a peek at those and then we'll be prepared to approve accordingly tomorrow. And then also your approval of expenses, please make sure that you, uh, review your expenses and we will be available as soon as we move forward to approve tomorrow. Vice Chairman, you look up ahead, something's up. Okay, I'm just skipping around a little bit because I expedite and move this people. I've been informed that our Executive Director of Development Authority needs to leave and I'm going to bring him up to the top just before the presentation to allow you to move up. Chris Pumper, you could come forward and yours, your tab is tab number 13. Number 13 is authorization to approve the intergovernmental agreement for Project Ramble and authorize the chairmen to sign all related documents pending final legal review.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all for your flexibility in today. We do have our GEA State Association Luncheon that is today. I'll be chair next year, so we'll be passing off the gavel today, so I have to head down for that. So, um, but nonetheless, um, we have work to do and that work is in relation to Project Ramble. Uh, Project Ramble is an existing industry that we, that we have in our community and we are under confidentiality, confidentiality with that entity today. What we have for you is the approval of an IGA, intergovernmental agreement, for Project Ramble as they consider a more long-term commitment and investment into Douglas County. That long-term commitment would include an additional $600 million investment initially moving forward, new jobs that are paying well above our county average wage. We did our agreement with them before and we talked about 25 new jobs being on site. They now have 350 on site and they will be increasing that, that job number as well. This is an investment that would ensure, as I mentioned, kind of a long-term viability, a long-term play in our community. They have been wonderful community partners for us here in the community. We actually had the opportunity to take a visit to their HQ, look at Madam Chair, our Superintendent North, one of our board members of Mr. Mike Stevens and our Chamber President to really get a full-on understanding of how important and essential this operation is to their overall operations and how with that essentiality and the challenges that they face here locally, how can we ensure that they stay here and continue to invest here in, in our community. So we do have an existing agreement in place with the operation today. We would look to amend that with a new agreement that would extend it another 10 years beyond the termination of the existing agreement. Um, I'll put a little point here. So with, with the, with this newly negotiated agreement, it would increase the taxes that are currently being paid today. Normally, we're looking to figure out how can we give a bigger break, so we're not giving a bigger break. Um, we are actually getting more out of this on an annual basis and will continue to increase the amount that we're getting out of the project. So it's, it's more of a long-term, longer-term commitment, but actually a greater benefit from a property tax standpoint to us. That is to us as a board, to the county and to the school system. And so it was very important, you know, as we kind of worked through this, to engage the superintendent in the process as well. He was going to try and be here, we haven't, there he is. So thank you for coming here as well. But this is something that we believe is truly an asset to the community, that has truly put a gold, the gold standard for Douglas County so that we continue to recruit in this space and we hope to continue that process going forward. Our plan is to have the IGA approved and then we will go through the closing and then what we will do is have an announcement in the first quarter, the very early part of the first quarter, that will also include some other, other benefits to come along with this more long-term agreement. Give me one second. So with that, we will start out with a new annual pilot payments that's roughly 20% of taxes normally due, which today we're getting less than that, starting out at 1.5 million a year and increasing over that period of time to 3.3 million dollars a year. And that is just for this one operation. This, this entity also has existing, other existing operations in the community that came about after we did our, um, our initial, our current agreement. And those operations are 100% taxable, so they are not a part of any type of property tax abatement plan or anything like that. That means today they are currently paying roughly $5 million a year in property taxes in our community and now what we're saying is we're increasing those property taxes to be coming into the community for the long-term future. And that, Madam Chair, I believe covers the majority, but I think I've sat, I've had the opportunity to sit down with most of you and talk through all of the other benefits that are coming along with this. But once again, we're excited to be here and here to answer the questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. I want to say that, Vice Chairman, Robinson.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I recognize the confidentiality, but first, again, in addition to being one of the top executive directors in the nation, to now be state chair, incoming chair is commendable and again, it represents Douglas County quite well. That's sincere, Chris, you bring a lot of value to this county and I recognize your office, as small as it is, it brings tremendous value. And that digest we just went through during that budget cycle, a lot of it had to do with you and what you as far as offsetting regarding residential, so appreciate you. Thank you very much. All right, real quick. New project, uh, new initiative in essence, an enhancement to current operations. It's effective January 1st. Did I hear that right?
Yeah, so they say we're going to effect January 1st, so payments, whenever taxes are paid, I think that's up.
Understood. Okay, so effective January, but nevertheless, um, all right, so, and you did, you did quote a number, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, and so, this is straight, what is the term? Is that disposable, how long?
Uh, 15 years.
Okay, 15 years, all right, very good. So this is long-term, so they're getting more into the as opposed to, so this extends beyond our, our current policy. The reason I have to say that, because our current policy is what? 10 years.
Yeah.
And so we're going to, what's being asked of the Board of Commissioners is to extend that beyond that, which it can't do. We have that power. So, 1.5, 15 years, okay, long-term commitment, it has existing operation. Obviously, there's some ancillary benefits that you're going to get into. The school board, that's really my question, is they're on board with this? Is that what I heard? Can the superintendent speak to it or is he just here for support or is he here to help convince us?
More than happy to speak.
Okay.
Mr. Superintendent, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, sir. To the board, we are excited about the partnership. We thank the board and we thank Chris and his team for allowing us to sit at the table. We feel like that this is not only a benefit to the company, but to the Douglas County school system as well. So the board, we are very supportive. Based upon their structure. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, that's all we need. Thank you. All right, let my colleagues speak.
Okay. Any other questions or questions on the board? And then I have attorney, you mind if he, okay, attorney?
No, no, because maybe you may answer some of my questions.
Chris, we need to, one thing that's new in this precise term is the waiver of permitting fees, which we haven't done and passed. I thought Chris could address that or Joe, but that's in here. So, just from a legal standpoint, people do this across the state or say there is some legal skepticism about whether that's appropriate or not, but having said that, it is done elsewhere. So we have two versions of this, one without the permitting waiver and one with the permitting waiver. I just think the board needs to address that, Chris or Joe.
I noticed that the superintendent has all green colors all of the day, but he left his black armband off of his suit. I'm not sure exactly what that was about.
It is so to remind Holden what he did to him. God, George, thank you.
Actually, the waiver of permit fees was for when Ramble built the prior structure and permit fees were waived then. So when Rod Kelsey and I got together and fashioned the new IGA for the period of time you've heard described, it simply was repeated. It was a waiver of fees. That actually occurred before. There's got to be new, no new out-of-ground construction, so it shouldn't be an issue anyway.
So does the language need to stay in or stay out regarding permitting?
I don't think we waived them before.
I believe it was, it was in the original agreement, but I spoke with the bond lawyer, he's talking with the company officials and I'll get back with you about that between now and this afternoon.
We just want to point that out. I'm of the impression we haven't, but having said that, Joe may be correct, we just want y'all aware of it so that you know what you're voting on. Most of them don't have that in mind.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, Superintendent, if you would just step up and control your view, please, sir. You spoke about some benefits to the school system, school board or whatever, and I'm assuming you're speaking on behalf of the school board that they are all in support of this particular project and this particular layout, which will affect you guys, you know, really.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, when I speak of benefits, um...
I only know that you should share, I mean, you know, the confidentiality and all that good stuff, I don't want to kind of, you know, get too far into it, but...
It would be hard for me to explicitly go into the benefits without demonstrating who the company is.
Got it, got it, okay.
But here's what I can share with you.
Okay.
If they remain status quo, we would still continue to benefit, basically on the model that we use for other companies. And so, this company is a 100% win for the Douglas County school system. And I just, without chairing, I couldn't go into it, yes, sir, it is, it's a 100%. In addition to the increase, that's just going to make it even a larger win for us as, if it was a different company and their model, it would be a little bit more difficult for us and we probably still support it because it creates jobs and benefits for the county, but this one is an easy one for us, just because of the company's model.
Yeah, okay, okay. And, and Chris, onto you with this probably last question. I know you mentioned like a 1.5 type of an increase and I think you and I had a conversation about how carved in stone are we with this whole makeup versus negotiable, how negotiable this whole concept is or is that a sidebar conversation that you would rather have with the board as opposed to public?
Yeah, so it's, it's, the process we went through, we went back and forth on trying to get to kind of what is the beginning and the end look like and, and get kind of, you know, feedback. Sometimes it's difficult to do, you know, get feedback from everybody throughout the process, so we kind of have to, you know, kind of lean towards leadership to help get us there and give us a guidance. But then, nothing is ever set in stone until you all approve it.
So are you able to go back, as I stated, and at least have that conversation with them as to the adjustment, I'll call it, that you and I had?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can really have that conversation.
Okay, so, outside of having too much dialogue with that, if you would do that much, and outside of that, I think that the whole makeup is definitely interesting. It's worth having conversation outside of the additional conversation, like I said, that we probably need to have to make sure that it's a win-win. I'm glad to hear that the school system is all one board and it's a win for the school system. And I'm excited too about the things that it also offers the school system, which I know a lot about. I just know how much you guys can share, you know, with the public. But with that, if we can go back and at least, you know, have that conversation with Joe, you guys, whoever else, about, you know, an additional number that we could look at, then I think we can, if you want to jump up to the podium, if there's some people...
He's going to clarify some.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, let Joe clarify if his own...
It's not related to that though.
Oh, it's not related? Okay, I know, he's going to jump in and just tell me what the numbers are here. Okay, outside of that, I mean, Joe, if you want to jump in and speak your piece, but I think if you have that, that other dialogue...
Sure.
And then we can all kind of come back to some resolve what that is and, and will this make it in time? Will the conversation be quick enough to where we can kind of have this on the agenda for, for tomorrow?
We can move very fast.
Okay, okay, so if you can move very fast and if you give us an answer and probably get back with this board, then I think we can kind of hopefully move. If not, then we'll have another conversation, I guess. Okay. You know, I guess you want to...
I've gotten some bad information. Those permit fees were paid, so I stand corrected on that. The information I got this morning was not correct.
Okay, all right.
So Joe, I understand they're going to take that language out, correct?
They got to get the okay with the client, but I have that recommendation.
Okay, so then we'll put that back in.
Move the language with respect to the waiver of fees.
Got it, okay, good enough. Okay, so Chris, if you'll get that much forward and kind of get back with us, I'm assuming the meeting is over, I guess, or something, I don't know how quick you, how fast is fast?
Some of your licenses are so important.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'll, I'll leave it there and hopefully get some conversation, have some conversation about that and I yield back.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. I'll commission a vote.
Yes, Chris, and you said this was to amend it 10 years, so this is an existing pilot program that we already have. So it's, and it will extend it out. In other words, we're in year five now on the existing one, we're going to extend it out.
Yeah, we're in year four or five now, so we'll physically continue, we're adding 10 years, basically.
But it will start, the payment will be next year.
The payments will start next year, 2020.
All right, thank you.
Get back. Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. All right, if there are no questions, questions on the board, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Pumper.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, next we'll move on to our next item, which is the Census 2020 update is our first presentation of the day. We have three presentations, one will be relatively short, but the Census 2020 update works, uh, is, I'm sorry, it's Tiffany Stewart standing and Rob, Robin Roberts. Yeah, I thought I saw you.
I guess so. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
So I'm Tiffany Stewart, standing as Director of External Affairs for Douglas County. So I'm excited this morning because we are 134 days away from Census Day. And so myself and Ryan Roberts, we are the co-chairs of the Douglas County Complete Count Census Committee. And before I get started, I did want to introduce a couple of people who are here with the Census. Well, I'll start with Ms. Akia Turner. She is here with the US Census.
I'm Zakia Rashid.
Which, I'm sorry, Ms. Doris Turner.
That's okay, it's all right.
And then Ms. Doris Turner.
Hi.
And then this Ingrid Landis-Davies, they are all here with the US Census and they'll come up and give just a brief, some brief statements after we finish, but I'm going to give a brief presentation of kind of where we are public engagement-wise with the Census. So, um, all right, so we all know how important the Census is. Last, I believe in 2010, Georgia got $13.7 billion for their Census, for the Census. Roughly, we can expect to get about $2,200 per person for the Census. So it's very, very important that we count everyone once and in the right place. That is the complete goal for the US Census and for Douglas County to make sure that we count all of our citizens. So, um, once again, these are our public engagement goals. Our goal is to make sure that people are aware of how the Census Day is going to be used and how it will affect their everyday lives. We also want to make sure that we deepen the trust with the US Census Bureau, let people know we need this information, why it's important and that your information will be confidential. And our third thing is just to educate the public of the options for what's going into the Census. So you'll be able to do phone, mail, and this year for the first time, we have been doing it online. So that's a new development and we want to make sure that people are aware of that. So this is the timeline for the Census. So the first thing that we did was we made sure to educate ourselves by going to national conferences, state conferences, to make sure that we are aware of what we need to do to get the word out about the Census. We are right now in our strategic early education phase where we're going out letting everybody know, hey, the Census is coming, these are the ways you can respond, please make sure that you know about the Census, but that you also let your neighbors and friends and family know. In January 2020, we'll be going into our awareness phase and this is where we're once again, please be aware the Census is coming, look out for your invitation that you'll be able to expect to the Census. After, in March, we'll go into the motivation phase. This is where we'll really get out, motivate people, go out to the community and say, hey, let's get excited about the Census, this is important. And then after that, we're going to go into our reminder phase, which is May through July. Please make sure you did the Census, complete your census. So the Douglas County Complete Count Committee, this is the organization chart. You see here at the top, you've got the City of Douglasville, City of Belen, Douglas County, City of Austin, but as we all came together to make sure that we work together to get out the word about the Census in Douglas County. We have six committees on this, I'm sorry, as a part of our Complete Count Committee, nonprofit, education, faith-based, at-large, business and citizen citizen. So we've already started engaging citizens with our Complete Count Committee. This is one of the things that we have for the committee members. Right now, we have about 60 people who are on our subcommittees. And so you see them brainstorming and coming up with ways to get out and get the word out to the community. And then that's some more pictures from that event. So our theme for the Census is let's count Douglas. So we're going to, what we're trying to do is use grassroots media, digital tools, just to engage citizens, community partnerships, to make sure that people know, hey, we got to make sure that everybody in Douglas County. So we have about 50 of these signs around the county. You may have seen that says 2020 Census, let's count. And they're all over the county, making sure that people know that the Census is coming. We had our official kickoff on May 14th and you'll see Mayor Reese Tofu-Lareka, Mayor Rochelle Robinson, Douglasville, Chairman Dr. Ramona Jackson-Jones and Commissioner Torena Carthon were some of our elected officials that participated in the kickoff. We also had a community meeting on June 20th where we invited members of the community to come out learning more about the Census, but we also had laptops around the room where people could actually sign up to work for the Census. So we had a lot of citizens who came and signed up to work for the Census. We have community partnerships. You'll see Ryan Roberts and Ms. Turner here. We partnered with the chamber at the luncheon to get the word out. We're, you know, we're partnering with local groups such as Junior League of Douglas County, the Douglas County School System. We really want to get the word out about the Census. So we have been at about, about 30 events over the past six months and you'll see here some of the major events in Douglas County, such as the Taste of Douglasville. We went to the Gold Rush Festival in Belen, of course, September Saturdays, to get the word out. And we've got some pictures here. This is from the Douglasville Ice Cream Social. We have Tracy Quetz, who is our Community Stakeholder Engagement Coordinator. So she was there helping to pass out information. This is from the Gold Rush Festival in Belen. We made sure to have a conference there, some of the Wind Down Wednesday events. As you can see, the people with the fans that we gave out at the different events. The trick-or-treating, we had kids take pictures and then Ms. Cleo, the reading dog, she's also making sure to help spread the word about the Census. And we want to thank our Commissioners because they have been spreading the word at their town halls about the Census. All right, and we've also worked with different elected officials. We have one of our state representatives who, you know, got on the stage at Wind Down Wednesday and made sure to let the citizens know that they need to participate in the Census and where they could find out more information. And then we've got some multimedia and I'm going to show you a quick sample video, some of the videos we'll be putting out. We're going to ask our elected officials, our community leaders, community partners to do videos just to let people know. So we have one video here that we've done. Get out of the way. Every household will receive an invitation, invitation. Hi, I am Dr. Ramona Jackson-Jones and I am the Chairwoman of Douglas County Board of Commissioners. 2020 will be a great year for Douglas County. We will be celebrating our 150th birthday, so we'll be participating in the 2020 Census. I'm asking you to join me in counting. The Census is a survey with basic questions like age, sex and number of people living in your household, including your children. Census results are used to steer important community decision-making. By counting everyone in your household, we can ensure that Douglas County will get the necessary funding for critical needs such as roads, schools, hospitals and emergency health services. By April 2020, every household will receive an invitation to participate in the 2020 Census. Participating is easy. You will be able to respond to the Census. You will be able to respond to the Census by phone, by mail, and online. By law, your responses will be safe and confidential. To get more information, please visit 2020census.gov. And to find out more about Douglas County activities, visit celebratedouglascounty.com. And remember, let's count Douglas! So, so that's basically what I have for you today, just to basically let you know that we are out in the community getting the word out. We plan on, from here, going to HOA's churches, community meetings, just different places where our hard-to-count communities will be. Just to make sure that we're getting the word out and encouraging other people to get the word out about the Census. So at this time, I'll bring up Ms. Turner and Ms. Landis-Davis and Ms. Rashid, and they will give some information on the 2020 Census recruiting efforts for Douglas County.
Hi, I'm Ingrid Landis-Davis. Thank you so much for making my job easy. I am the Field Manager for Douglas County, and Douglas County is ahead of all the counties in West Georgia. We, we, in terms of recruiting, in terms of participation, and thank you so much. This has been, it's really been great. We are less than a hundred people away from fulfilling our recruitment goals. None of the other counties are even close to that. So, yeah, because, you know why? Because they're not participating. They don't have a let's count committee, and we're doing everything we can to try to get them, you know, involved, so that they, you know, can count, but nothing's happening. So, if you know anybody in Carroll or Paulding, tell them to get involved, because it's not happening. So, thank you, congratulations, Douglas is doing great.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Flores Turner, and I am a Partnership Specialist with the US Census Bureau. And Douglas County is one of my counties that I work with. And I want to say how excited I am about how Ron and Tiffany and the whole Complete Count Committee has gotten involved with the Census. I mean, you hit the ground running. We use, I actually use your county as a model for other counties, because you've done so well. We wear our pins proudly. We, we thank you so much for what you've done. And I won't go into what the Census is all about, because your chairman has done an excellent job, and everyone knows Tiffany, you've done an excellent job in talking about the Census. But I want to, one of our initiatives that we're really working toward right now is Census in school. We call it statistics in school. And so we are really pushing that. So we will be working with all the schools in the counties, getting them on board. You know, our children are important, remember children of age of under five were not counted on the last census, and we lost millions of dollars. So we wanna make sure, remember, the Census is money and power, and it's very important that you let everyone know in your area that the Census is safe, it's easy, it's important, and we will count you once and only once and in the right place. So please, please get involved. We're involved with all the colleges, all the universities, elementary schools, high schools, middle schools. And we're gonna be talking about the Census. And we have some great videos that we're gonna share at the schools, letting them know about how important children are in your PTAs and things of that nature. So make sure that you get involved, stay involved, and let's make sure that Douglas County gets a complete and accurate count in 2020. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. Any questions from the board of commissioners regarding the Census and comments? Okay.
But Chairman Robinson? Yeah, and again, I recognize this is my second census here, and it is a totally different experience. There is an active engagement. I'm pleased with the efforts by the administration on getting the word out there. I mean, it's, you're wearing it well. You know, in times past, sometimes there's an approach to Census of, you don't want nobody to know. It's sort of this, it's covert to a certain extent. Like the comment was made, it appears that some people tried to avoid it, and it's probably for the wrong reasons. And I just wanna acknowledge and commend the county for going and leveraging your dollars. I mean, it is about dollars, it is about power, it is about like, okay, so you're paying income tax up to the best, and yet you don't wanna get it. And you let these other forty-nine states and other counties take your money. Now, why do you do that? This gives you a position to be able to leverage that through these statistics that they say. So as I always say, follow the money, guys. Let's not be so convenient in how we approach it. It's important, it's your tax dollars, right? So leverage your local dollars, go get that federal dollars, and how we do this through this mechanism about the Census. Remember what this is all about. So, again, I just wanted to comment on that, I appreciate the efforts that we're, we're going after it. It's something I've always said, leverage your capital stack. We need federal dollars for a lot of things that we do here locally, even a state, as much as they say separate from federal and state. Look at the state's budget. A lot of federal dollars go in that state budget, but they kind of downplay that. But again, I do appreciate it, and I give it for.
Thank you so much. Okay, Commissioner Carthon?
I just have one question. How are we making sure that we get out to our minority community to ensure that they know that it is safe to fill out the Census so that we won't miss them, because they're a part of it?
No, I agree. So one of the things that we've done, we actually have a, you saw Tracy Crooks in the photograph, she is our Community Stakeholder Engagement. We also have Maggie Hora, she is the Public Outreach Coordinator, and she is Hispanic Business Officer here in Douglas County. She's still a radio personality on Ossale, and she's working with Hispanic communities, all different, all of our hard-to-count communities, she's really focusing on that. We're gonna use the existing social media of the county, the cities. We will be putting out flyers and laundry mats and, I mean, anywhere you can think of, we're gonna be, you know, putting flyers, doing what we need to do to get to those hard-to-count communities, because, you know, it's easy to go to a Chamber Luncheon, but you've gotta go to the people who you know may not, the Census is on your brother, 'cause they're trying to survive, you know? So we're really gonna be pushing and really getting out and trying to get those people, or just everybody, involved.
I just wanna add to that also, as a Partnership Specialist, we go to, we look at the county tracks. And we look at those tracks that are the hard-to-count tracks, we call those HTC's. And we make sure that we try to have events in those areas. We make sure that, because when you, when you look at your map and you look at those colors, and you see that in those tracks, those particular tracks, that those are the areas that did not respond well in our last census. So we wanna make sure that we have information about that, because we're so excited about the initiative to go online and fill out the Census. So that's one of the things we're doing, and we're, like she said, we're going to all different areas. And you guys have been very instrumental in helping us with that. We're partnering with this team as well as our own team, because that's our job to help do that. So those are some of the things that we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, and I'd like to add, for those, and I apologize for talking behind you like this.
That's okay. You could, if you go to the podium, you'll see your face. Thank you.
And I ask Commissioner Torena, this mentioned those minorities, but what about those that we really need to kinda address, those that are homeless, don't have an address? How you, what's the approach to make sure you get those guys? I mean, remember, we'd like to speak to them.
She does the field operations.
Because I don't want those guys, which, we've done a great job, and this is like my second round of this, so I get it, but I just wanna make it, acknowledge that we're definitely, we're trying to get everybody, not just a sector of.
Right, so what we do is we put a team, we put a team into what we call a track. And we break, you know, we break the county up into tracks. And we put a team into a track, and what we do is we literally walk the area. And we're trained on how to actually count the homeless population. So we have special training on that.
So, I know you probably know this though, but you know there is a couple of pockets that within Douglas County that where they are. You're not doing, talking to them.
We have areas that, we have, like you said, a team of people. And they, we have a homeless group that actually, that's their initiative, homeless. Like we have an initiative for Census in schools, homeless is one of those initiatives as well. So there's, there's people that actually work in partnership to make sure those people are counted. Whether they're in safe, you know, whatever location they're in, like under the bridge, or in a park, or wherever they may be, that they are counted.
But I think she knows kind of where they are.
Yeah, they have, yeah, we know where they are, and we, you know.
Okay, I'm just making sure that you guys definitely acknowledge that we're after everybody.
Everybody, everyone.
And there's a couple of time factors now that we're gonna be feeding the hungry on Thanksgiving, that we get a great percentage of these individuals that we normally pull out. We'll do the same thing in December, on December twenty-fifth, we'll do the same thing, right here on Clearman Road at the. At the Wendy's.
At the Wendy's.
Thank you.
Do you mind to make sure that we're involved in those initiatives? So I.
Welcome, you're invited.
Thank you so much.
So, but I just wanted to make sure that we don't miss those that are less fortunate or who don't have an address.
Absolutely.
They just kinda, their home is where they are.
Exactly.
What they got is what they got.
Exactly.
And it's very little, and I don't want them to go unnoticed, because as the Vice Chair stated, this is your dollar, your tax dollars that you're trying to protect and receive. But if you don't count these individuals, and I'm just a little surprised that we didn't count under five, I'm just a little baffled by that, but I'm glad at least we acknowledged what we went.
That was in twenty-ten, I just went there.
Yeah, last time around, so let's make sure we don't lose those individuals. So, if you, I mean, great job, I mean, this is a great initiative, and thanks to the program manager over there who actually kinda did the videos, they got all this stuff, they put all this stuff.
We did the video.
Oh, oh. Great job with the video. And we need to acknowledge that by putting it on DC twenty-three.
We're gonna work with that.
And I'm hoping that the city would do the same on their community channel as well. So we won't, you know, kinda miss the opportunity of finding these individuals.
Exactly.
It's gonna be easier to go to the homes and those that are fortunate enough. That part will be a little bit easy. However, it's those ones that you're gonna have some hard times in trying to reach out and find. And for those Hispanics and others who feel threatened by this, what's your plan to make them feel safe?
So we've already started really approaching the Hispanic community, going to the stores. We have materials all in Spanish, going to the stores, going to the churches. We are really focusing in, especially over in Lithia Springs area, over that area, we've got, we've actually saturated all the other areas, but that particular area, we are now focusing on.
And my concern is, how do you get them to understand and not to be fearful about knowing that we're counting you, as opposed to knowing that you're here legally or illegally?
We talk about those confidentiality things as far as partnership goes. We also have, we reach out to the Hispanic Councils and Chamber, Chamber, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. We know where the pockets are where most Hispanics may live. We also have bilingual language, we have bilingual Partnership Specialists. So we have Asian, you know.
But you know what I'm saying, the fear for them is.
We talk about that.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, how are you trying to offset that fear that knowing where you are, we just wanna count for you, not knowing that you're here illegally or illegally? I mean, there are some who wants to know that you're here illegally, I get that. But I think this census, in any census, is about how many people are here, not whether you're here legally or not. So how do you kinda get them from that fear of knowing that you're here versus knowing that you're here illegally or not?
Because we don't really talk about the legal, the legality parts of it, if you will. We're, if you're here on the US soil, then you will be counted. And we have to make sure that we, that we make them feel comfortable in knowing and safe. That's why we talk about how it's safe, it's easy, it's important. And we have people, like I said, groups of our Hispanic Partnership Specialists, they, sometimes they feel more comfortable, you know, talking to, you know, we make sure that we get the churches involved, the Hispanic churches, you know. And they go out and they talk to them, and they let them know, we're working here, and we want you to know that it's safe and it's easy and it's important. So there, there, we have cheats for confidentiality, we talk about it a lot, so we don't ignore it. We tell them about it. So they know, they know about it, and I, and it's, I think it's working, because we have a lot, we do a lot of Hispanic events, and we go to, you know, we're just everywhere.
And I just wanted to acknowledge that, because I know that's where the fear is.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I have my green card and all this other good stuff. So also, just a recommendation that you guys publish and do a video of some sort.
We have.
That would be, you know, directed to them, that stressed the mere fact of.
We have videos, we have pamphlets with language, we have the language for them. They don't, it's not that, she did not show it today, but we have, if time would not permit for us to show you all that we do have, but we do have it.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you, good job.
Mr. Mitchell, our next video will be using local people who are Hispanic, church leaders, community leaders, to make sure that the people in the community, how people they can identify with, so we'll be good.
And just make sure that that gets the programming to make sure that we are airing that.
Right.
And frequently airing that, I think that's important.
Okay. Absolutely.
Thank you, and you?
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Alright, thank you all so much for coming out.
Tiffany, Director of Stuist, can we make sure, what was the count last in two thousand and ten? If you don't know it, that's okay, because I want an official count.
Seventy-four percent.
It was seventy-four percent.
All right, how many people translate into the number of citizens? That's okay, if you don't know it.
One thirty-two.
One thirty-two?
I believe it was around that number, but I don't know the exact number.
That's okay.
I'll get back to you.
Give the official number for ninety, two thousand, and two thousand and ten later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, thank you so much, Tiffany, for that presentation, Detective Stone Affairs. Alright, all heart and mind clear on the Census. I'm gonna shift a little bit, we have our judge here, someone, get him back to his courtroom. Judge McLean, that you can come forward. It's tab number ten. Tab number ten is Authorization to Approve the No Governmental Agreement, oh, sorry, it's tab number ten. Authorization to Approve an MOU with the Douglas County Homeless Coalition, Inc. DCHC to provide case management services after the direction of DCHC and Judge McLean to be paid at the rate of fifteen dollars per hour based upon the forty-hour week, and authorize the chairman to sign all the related documents, Judge McLean.
Thank you. Yeah, I like, let's count, but I like everybody counts a little better, including homeless, as some commissioners should point out. I can't speak to the specific language in the MOU, because the county attorney took what I wrote, completely changed everything, so.
To the better, right?
To the better. So he gets credit for that, and he likes correcting me any chance he gets, so it's my pleasure to let him do that. But I can't speak to the goal. When we first started the Sanctuary Village Initiative with Work Commissioners, we all agreed and understood that we would need a person to supervise these folks, to manage them, to make sure they get to their treatment, to make sure they get to their programming, to transport them to and fro. And one of the reasons that we located Sanctuary Village at the landfill was cost. We're saving a lot of money using that space and that property. But there is some pushback from some elements of the community to not have the homeless in their neighborhood or in their backyard. And so, having them where we're gonna have them means they've gotta be transported. They're not gonna be able to walk from the landfill to the CSB, for example, or walk from the landfill to apply for a job or even work for a job. So the original vision was to have at least one person who would oversee the location, make sure it's kept in good order, make sure it's kept in repair, keep a good eye on the residents, and also make sure that they go to the programming that we're gonna design for them at the Community Services Board. And what came about was the United Way, through the efforts of the Homeless Coalition, decided to give the Coalition a three-for-one. to give the Coalition a three-for-one grant for this person, uh, to manage Sanctuary Village. And that's what's in the grant, uh, this person is to be dedicated to Sanctuary Village, and the United Way is gonna give us three dollars for every one dollar that we contribute, which will not only be for the compensation for this person, but it will also go to a first month's rent or utilities, once the person transitions out of Sanctuary Village to their own residence. And so some of the funds are set aside by the United Way for that purpose. The Homeless Coalition has got someone hired, uh, that I, I one hundred percent agree with to do this job. Um, and we need this M O U, basically so we can contribute our portion to that person's compensation, but also so it would be legally authorized for the county to loan a van to take people to and fro, uh, and go through the driver's safety course that you have to go through. This person will not be a county employee, they will not be receiving county benefits, they will be an employee of the Douglas County Homeless Coalition, but we will be contributing, uh, funds and a van to that work, so that's, that's the goal. And the person's already on the job, has been for a few weeks, get establishing relationship with the homeless, establishing relationship with the C S B, uh, going out to the homeless camps with the folks of the Coalition that serve them on a weekly, weekly basis, getting to know and build trust with the homeless folks, and also getting to know the system of Mr. Light for that, as he says, so that's what we're asking the commission to do. And there's no budget impact that I know of, the, the funds that we're talking about are gonna come out of my existing budget, assuming my budget stays the same, uh, and isn't cut, we'll be able to afford it in my budget.
Okay. I certainly believe you had a comment.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we're in agreement with Judge McLean, and we have directed final revisions, and the judge and I, I think we agree on those final revisions. Uh, the, the point, I, I think, a, a couple of points, number one, M O U is for a year, it can be terminated by either party with thirty days' notice, if the grant funding ends, y'all, it's discretionary whether it continues, I, I do need to make y'all aware of this one point, even if the employee technically is not an our employee, under some case law, uh, the concern might be, they might be considered a joint, we might be a joint employer for liability purposes, but I think it's a risk the county's willing to take to get, accomplish the mission. So I don't wanna bog down in the weeds, but I do need to point that out, that although we structured this as if the import, the person works for another entity, under the base law, because of the how it's being funded, it might be considered a joint employment relationship for purposes of liability, it'll just be an inherent risk of what we do every day in providing services, so, but I did wanna point that out, but I think the judge and I have agreed on the final language, and, uh, if y'all wanna move this forward, we're ready.
Any questions from board, almost, gentlemen?
Yeah, I mean, two quick things, uh, county ministry, we don't anticipate, um, any cuts to the judge's budget, do we?
Um, to the operating budget, yes, but these, you got, you have grant funds too, right? Or the date funds?
Yes, with the time period.
This is across the board, so that's not a good thing.
This, well, okay, we'll come back to that, I, 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 no, okay, just make a note of that, uh, that I, I did not anticipate any, um, shortcoming in, in, in that, that section for this budget, but the budget process is not over, we're still in play, but I'm glad that you brought that out, thank you, Judge, for saying that.
And it wasn't your fund specifically, it was across the board.
Right, well, we, we returned money.
Yeah, 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 you gotta make him feel good now, Mark, come on, now, all right, we got it, we got it, all right, let me keep going. Uh, Judge, um, I appreciate your efforts here, again, it is about leveraging our dollars, I didn't know you were back there, I would acknowledge you, my, my bad. Um, but I do, um, respect the fact of how you really go act, uh, your efforts, I mean, you really try to be, um, you know, deliberate and intentional, and how you are designing and wrecking your, your service delivery model, um, is holistic, um, it, 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 it's, it's not anxious, um, and I, I, it, it's very prudent, I, I appreciate it, and I've watched you, um, operate this quite some time, and so I'm excited about this, obviously we were involved in the Homeless Coalition early on, Commissioner Mitchell and I, we first started this whole thing with Richard Grant, uh, no, Charles Grantson, and so I appreciate it, so here's my question then, um, three to one, or three to what, no, three out of four, three to one?
For every one dollar, we get three.
One, three gets your total, all right, so how much is that, roughly? Just, I mean, is it fifty thousand we're paying this person all loaded, or?
Well, we're contributing five dollars an hour for his compensation, his, his, his hour compensation is fifteen dollars an hour, he has a master's degree, he's a Marine Corps veteran, um, and he's been a long time volunteer at the pantry for about eight or nine years, so he's got a heart to serve.
Right.
And we are going to pay six hundred and fifty-four dollars a month through the, to the Affordable Care Act, we're not gonna pay it, we're gonna give him the money to purchase health insurance for his family.
That's where I was gonna go, you, you answered that, how, how are you gonna approach this, and to, to our attorney's point, uh, they are doing a lot of work on our behalf, and, and so the, um, are you, and Ken, this is one report, is this a clean cut, in other words, I appreciate when we say we're, we're creating a job, all right, we're creating opportunity for somebody, we, we had this conversation during the budget process, we're creating a job, this is somebody that you know, that you guys are comfortable, and so, but are they getting the full benefit, and it sounds like, um, we're getting there, right, um, full benefits, you're gonna fund his benefits?
We're going to give him six hundred and fifty-four dollars.
I see, contribution.
To buy health insurance on his own, because he's not a county employee, and so he's not eligible to receive any benefits from the county.
Yeah.
And quite frankly, it's a mechanism to control costs.
I see.
And doing something we've never done before, we wanna see how it works before we make too big an investment in it.
I see, yeah, but, but we're doing good, I mean, we started from just knowing that people exist, but now we're putting a real system in place, and, and at some point it become institutional, I, I do appreciate it, that we're just not throwing hard local dollars at that thing to build it up really, really fast, I mean, you're being deliberate, so, again, keep going, you are a model that I, obviously I've been watching for quite some time, and I appreciate your approach, um, I have no objections to this, now Chair, you go.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, Commissioner, um, Roxanne, I'm solving, Commissioner Carver, first, then.
I don't know if this question is for Judge McLean or for you, but when it comes to, um, county vehicles, who is responsible for that? And I always say this because I sit on the Safety Committee Board, Judge, so I get to see how many incidents happen with county vehicles, and so I have to take that into consideration if we are.
Well, uh, to make, uh, we work backwards on this one, to, to get the result that the judge is trying to achieve, I think everybody's favorable towards, we sort of work piece miller contract. The truth of the matter is, when you loan a county vehicle to provide a service, uh, you've got a permissive driver in there, you, that's why I said there's some potential joint employment issues and joint liability issues because of the car, but, you know, I think it's no different risk than anybody else's driving a car right now for the county vehicle, that we would potentially be on the hook related to the use of a vehicle, uh, because it's got our name on it, our insurance would be at risk, and Matt will make sure that the vehicle's covered, uh, did that answer your question?
It does, but I, I would wish we would look at maybe an alternative to using the county vehicle, I understand that the, you know, the people who are under the, the, um, the program need to have transportation, but we do have Connect Douglas, we do have other alternatives, we do have the door service that we do provide, the flex service that we provide, if we could use some of that as opposed to just putting off of that.
I, I think, and I don't wanna speak for the judge, let him weigh in when he wants to, but I think the concern was, in order to monetize the amount of money in the best way, if, if we third-partyed the contract with the Coalition, and they had to provide a car, they would come to be offering funds to buy the car, the insurance, everything else, so we're just essentially wrapping it into one for the car, and I can't speak to the issue of when a car is needed or not, but apparently this particular person, his job is gonna require back and forth and everything else, and so, that's how we got to where we got it. Judge, you wanna address that?
Well, let me say this with total respect, but if you wanna put a Connect Douglas bus and driver at my complete disposal, I will take it, but with this population, you might have to take them to Carrollton to get an I D, you might have to take them to the hospital, you might have to take them to the pantry to get food, you might have to take them to the C S B, and the C S B, we're not gonna be able to determine their schedule for their services, so it's gonna be hard to, to not have the flexibility, I don't know how we could do it.
Is it not feasible for that individual that you're speaking of to use their own personal vehicle?
To transport.
To transport.
Like, he's got a pickup truck, now he could put, pay the I D on the bed of the truck, that's somebody.
I'm just wondering, I'm just talking out loud.
Right, it's, the issue is flexibility, you know, a dedicated transportation service, is it gonna be available to take someone to Carrollton, is it gonna be available to take someone to the food stamp office, is it gonna be available when the C S B says this is the class that this guy has to go to, which is gonna be a class that will have other people in it, will not necessarily be a dedicated class just for our people. So, uh, I don't know how we could do that, but we, we could certainly give it a shot.
Yeah, and I can add, Ma- Madam Carver, I, I think the issue is still gonna be the same, uh, if he had a private car, and he was using it and getting reimbursed, his insurance is probably gonna say, because he was in a course in Skoda, commercial enterprise, that is transporting people under pay, work for hire, so to speak, it's not gonna be covered under his baseline car insurance, ultimately, they look, who employs him, it would be a joint employment situation I raised earlier, so I don't think you're gonna get around this no matter how we wrap it.
Okay.
It is very challenging, and, uh, so at least from my point of view, it, flexibility is something we're, we're hoping we can get.
All right, yeah, thank you. Mr.?
I got it.
Uh, yes, Judge, um, when this person is taking someone to Carrollton to get an I D, that's gonna vacate his, uh, presence at Sanctuary City, how is one person gonna do this? Uh, they may be, he may be taking them all over to the, uh, C S B, yes, yes, service, yeah, C S B, um, uh, is one person gonna be driving it and nobody, um, checking to make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing in the bus, kinda like a bus control, uh, patrol?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, this person is to oversee the Sanctuary Village, and he's gonna be taking one individual over here.
He, he's not gonna live there, he, he's, he's gonna.
He's gonna be there forty hours a day.
Check the place periodically, he's gonna make visits, uh, to the location, he's gonna inspect the facilities, he's gonna interact, but he's not gonna like permanently reside there.
But he's gonna be there forty hours a week.
This is gonna be his job, forty hours a week.
So he's gonna be on the job, but what if he needs to be over here, and there's still people over here, is he not, is it okay for him to leave the village?
He's gonna have to, we're, we're not gonna be able to have the resources to have someone like sit guard over there twenty-four seven. Now, I'm hoping that I'll be able to employ someone with the sheriff's office to live there and get free rent, because I'm building two family units, and I've talked with the sheriff about it, and a single man, what we call a courtesy officer, a lot of the apartment complexes in even some neighborhoods have an officer that lives there and gets free rent in exchange for keeping an eye on things, but, and I think that would be something we'd have to look at once we scale up and have a lot of people there, but I don't have the resources to have someone watch them like a, a guard or something.
So that's not his, his job, is to watch over the village, just to, just kinda make sure.
Not on a twenty-four seven basis, but to inspect the facilities, check on the participants, transport them, make sure it's repaired, make sure there's no contraband there, make sure they're not having guests or tearing it up, but we're also gonna have a, a, a video security system, like we have at our other, uh, residences that we operate, and we don't have full-time staff there either, and Edwin doesn't have full-time staff at his shelter, full-time staff at a shelter is a very, very hard thing to come by, it's very hard to find someone that will do it, it's very hard to find the money to pay for it, and you'll find that you're not gonna have a full-time staff at any homeless shelter unless it's a very, very large, well-funded facility, it just doesn't really exist.
Uh, also, you said that you were gonna be paying six hundred and fifty dollars toward the insurance for him and his family.
That's correct.
We don't, the county, does it pay for the family of anybody, this is kind of unusual, but you're talking about six hundred and fifty dollars a month?
Six hundred and fifty dollars a month that he would directly.
But it's a month, it's not just for a year or.
That's what it costs through the Affordable, the Affordable Care Act.
Okay, but, uh, I, I didn't understand why we were paying for the family also.
Well, 'cause he has a family, they don't have insurance.
Well, I know, but all of our employees have families, is what I'm saying, although he's not an employee, we're supplementing him in a way that we don't supplement employees, so I just thought that was kinda odd.
I, I didn't, it's news to me if, if our insurance with the county doesn't cover family members, I didn't know that.
I know.
Just covers the.
Well, yeah, the employee has to pay for the.
That's it.
For the family, this is family coverage, is what he's talking about.
I understand.
Okay, I, you're back.
Okay, Commissioner Mitchell.
So, make sure we're clear, you, you're paying, you're giving him six hundred dollars, now how is he so fit to cover his family or not, or how, that's all you're saying you're gonna give to him?
Yes.
Now, if, if, if he picks up a family covers, which I think he will, it may cost him nine hundred dollars, he'll need to deal with the three hundred dollars if that's the case, okay?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we understand that, 'cause I think we're looking a little confused of trying to say you're trying to pay for the family, which you're just saying, here's a magical number of six hundred dollars that will cover his insurance, now, his insurance needs our family, not, he's not, he's not by himself, am I correct?
He, he has a wife.
Okay, all right.
And a small child.
Dogs.
And they, they don't have insurance because they can't afford it.
I understand, but you're contributing six hundred dollars for his insurance.
I just feel like it's the right thing to do.
No, that's okay.
Someone of this quality who's getting paid fifteen dollars an hour, is something most people.
I, I totally agree with you, I just wanted to clarify that, this is the amount of money you, you saw that might be enough to cover whatever he was trying to cover against the insurance, and he happened to have a family that kinda may be more than that, I mean, I'm assuming it probably is more than that, six hundred dollars, but that's around about the number that you guys found, thought was the good number to pay him, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right, so much for that, um, I, I, I think Commissioner and I, uh, Vice Chair and I was trying to really try to understand the three percent or the fifteen dollars and, and where out, you eventually would have been able to say what that number is, because, um, just, just saying, uh.
It's five dollars an hour.
Okay, so.
Plus the cost of the.
Right.
Insurance, so, so to put it in easily understandable terms.
Thank you.
It's about a hundred and fifty dollars over minimum wage that the county would be contributing, minimum wage is twelve hundred and sixty dollars a month.
Okay.
So we're talking five dollars an hour, forty hours a week, two hundred dollars a week, plus the cost of the insurance.
Gotcha.
So the county would be contributing, um, fourteen hundred dollars a month?
Okay, so, and, and, and that number will be covered, I think you mentioned, in your budget or somewhere, if your budget.
Allows. If it doesn't, then I'm gonna have to go, I don't know what.
Okay, so, 'cause I, I think, I know where he was going, what we all are going with this, is that there's been some unique adjustments that are coming forth about the budget, and, um, that could become interesting, not that it may hurt this situation, but it could become interesting, that's all, so.
Well, I think interesting is interesting, I, I like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we'll get with it, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, um, and outside of that, so this gentleman will be dealing with a budget, I would assume, that you guys will have, he would, whether it's through us or through, um, who was that, who was it?
Through the Homeless Coalition.
Homeless Coalition, so he, he or she, he will be dealing with some form of a budget that will have to deal with the light, gas, water, um, and. So he, he or she, he would be dealing with some form of a budget that will have to deal with the light, gas, water, um, and all that stuff. And, and he'll, I'm assuming he's prepared for dealing with budgets, even though we deal small budgets, like he'll still have to deal with that.
I, I would have to deal with the budget of the facility myself.
Got it, okay.
Like I deal with the budget of the two houses that we already operate.
Got it.
But, so he would just have to deal with the folks.
Okay, just transporting them to and from. And you guys will say, okay, you, you're coming in in budget, you know? Because I'm assuming there will be an expense even from gas, travel.
Yes.
At least, you know, that, that's...
There will be definitely gas expense.
Right, so, so with that, I'm assuming that'll be reimbursable as he go along? Or we just kind of pick up a county vehicle and gas it up and...
Which will be charged to my budget.
Oh, yeah, it'll be charged to your budget, okay. So just, I want to make sure we're accounting for all the numbers that, the possible numbers or possibilities. So if, if, it sounds like it won't be a whole lot, but it could be. If he's going back to Carrollton and back, you know, three or four times a day, that could become an interesting number as we move along, this journey.
And it's hard to predict until we figure out just how many people we're going to be managing and when. Which is, which is a moving target.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and even then it'll still be a moving target, because it's the need, it's trying to fulfill the need. And that need could be one this time and ten the next time to get to and from Carrollton and back. And I'm only just an hypothetical. So that, that, that's that moving target that you don't know until it happens, so I get it. But outside of that, I, I'll be with that. I yield back.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. All right, Judge, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Our Vice Chairman.
Judge, real quick, just, just to clarify. So fifteen dollars an hour, that's fine. We get, um, a living wage. I appreciate that. That's something I think is important, um, to acknowledge. Um, um, all right, so here's what happens now. We won't find ourselves in him working an hourly wage that he starts getting overtime, that he gets busy. All right, so, you know, we, we, not that he would get a million dollar worth of overtime, but relatively speaking, uh, that he does become a lifestyle creator. Um, how, how will you balance that? Because that's something that we're sensitive to. Will you, is there a cap? Are you just saying three to one, fifteen dollars an hour to save the conversation, to say that's what we're shooting for? Or is there, are we saying a salary fixed? And we won't have to be worried about that? Now, it's just the way you translated it? What are you saying? Just for the record.
Five dollars an hour for forty hour week.
No overtime.
Six hundred and fifty-four dollars a month for the insurance, period.
No overtime?
No.
But if he works overtime, we're required by what law? To pay him overtime. So how are y'all going to get, it's something to think about. I'm okay with things as is, but we, we've been dealing with this, this ain't new to us. So I just want to be sensitive that, that the heart is right, but the law is the law. And if that guy works forty-one hours, we owe him an hour work of overtime. And so how will we regulate that? Um, and, and so it may be needed that he needs to go do what he needs to do. We won't argue that. We'll have to pay him. But we just know how this works. So if we can be sensitive to that, y'all work through this. I'm sure I won't labor this now, but I, I just want to make sure that it's acknowledged. I'm good. Thank you.
Well, y'all say, I don't know about overtime for someone who's technically an employee of the Homeless Coalition under contract. But assuming that that's the case, uh, all I can tell you is it's up to you. If you don't want him having overtime, he'll go off the clock for forty hours, no matter what.
Got it.
Goodness, sir. Or, or, I don't know, do we, can, maybe a question for you though? Do we make this a salary type of a contractual agreement? You know, so that way, it doesn't matter if he worked fifty-one hours or, or twenty-five hours, he'll get that, you know, that amount, fifteen dollars an hour times forty, blah, blah. And that way, to, to assure that overtime won't become a headache for...
Can I just interject something on that? The whole purpose was to save y'all money.
Yeah, yeah.
And not add a position to y'all, and not add benefits, and not add salary, and do this as cost effectively as possible.
And you've done that.
But, but we'll, we'll go in whatever direction you guys want to go.
No, Judge, you've done that. I think you, you've done that part. I think you've done a great job at that. I think, based on Vice Chairman's comment, that if he works overtime, the way it's structured, we owe him based on EEOC laws and everything else, overtime, correct?
Well, he's a, technically the Coalition owes him, but we could be considered a joint employer, I think. So, but here's the problem. E, e- even if he was working here, he's getting supervised by Judge McLean and his people. We have no way of controlling hours, even if we put him on staff here. In other words, they are the supervisors. Does that make sense?
But, but my point though is, if he was salaried, that he made thirty thousand dollars a year, twenty-five dollars a month, whatever that number is, then that, that, whether you work ten hours or fifty-one hours, that's what you'll get, that's your monthly, weekly salary, what that...
The question is going to become on that, whether or not he's an exempt employee or not. If he's not an exempt employee, he still would have, uh, arguments for overtime and comp time. If the number of hours divided by the pay did not equate to, it, it worked out that he was working more hours, he potentially could, we could, somebody's could be liable for overtime. The people that are exempt on salary tend to be management, well, where it doesn't matter how many hours they work, that's what they get paid. Professional services, doesn't matter how many hours, that's what they get paid. He's driving a bus.
Yeah, so for the judge, he couldn't be the supervisor of, uh, of this particular facility. You wouldn't, I don't think that you care about that, because you're saying if there's no overtime, there's no overtime. So we call him Supervisor X to say, to exempt him from overtime. I'm just only asking from you guys' point of view, that door.
I think we just need to tell Judge, Judge, it's your budget. He doesn't need to go over overtime, because we're not funding overtime. It's going to come out some way from you eventually if you get into overtime. Because your, your control is on the budget part of it, if that makes any sense. You control his budget that he's using, to the extent you contribute any money to it on these programs.
We'll have another conversation about this.
We, we talk, just so you know, I don't want to, to shake off what you're saying, but we, our initial instincts were, let's just take him a staff person and do X, Y, and Z, what you're pointing out now. But because of the dialogue about money and benefits and control and all that, we then moved to where we are now. So that was discussed, whether it should be, uh, uh, remember, this is terminable on thirty days notice. It's terminable when a grant's not there, it's terminable. Whereas if you had an employee, then you got to confirm yourself, well, can you just terminate based on that?
I understand that.
So that's how, that's how we got to where we are.
But I'm still not where I think, where we, where I think Vice Chair and others are trying to, to get to. But we'll, Judge, I'm, I'm going to leave it at that.
We're, we're comfortable with whatever you guys say, obviously, as long as we can just get the job done. The, the structure, the paperwork is...
I get that.
I leave that to y'all.
I get that. Thank you very much. I yield back.
Thank you so much, Judge. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for coming. Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Judge. I'm shifting gears just a little bit. I have another, um, our Solicitor General, which we need to get back to important. Solicitor General, uh, Sonia Compton, please come forward.
There you are. Okay, um, tab number twelve is authorization to advertise for a public hearing to create a new ordinance regarding disorderly conduct at the request of this Solicitor General. Solicitor Compton, please.
Good morning.
Thank you all. Have a copy of the ordinance proposed, is that correct? Yes. One was sent out by Mr. Bernard Hira. He disseminated a note this morning that made one small change in number two. I removed the phrase "in any manner." So I'm here asking you all to authorize that this ordinance be proposed, uh, be publicized as a proposed new ordinance for our county. The ordinances will be called the Disorderly Conduct Ordinance. And it specifies certain acts that would be considered disorderly conduct in this county. And we will handle it under the county ordinance as opposed to a state statute.
Okay. Any questions for the board? Um, I saw Commissioner Compton, I saw yours first, anyway.
Solicitor General, Compton, can you explain why this is needed?
Absolutely. Right now, numerous counties, Cobb, Henry, and the various, various other counties have what they call county ordinance, ordinances. And it covers, um, different types of provisions, and, and of course, we have them here. But right now, we don't have one in our county for disorderly conduct. Oftentimes, because we prosecute misdemeanor cases, we have cases such as public drunkenness, bordering prowling. If we could prosecute those cases as a county ordinance, that would assist us very, very much. The other thing is, right now, and I'm sure what brought this to everybody's attention, is number two, which deals with possession of less than an ounce of marijuana. Less than an ounce of marijuana is a misdemeanor. Unfortunately, due to the new hemp law, we cannot prosecute that here in Douglas County. And the reason being is, in order to prosecute a drug, you must be able to prove that it is in fact that drug. Right now, hemp and marijuana is very close. And what distinguishes is the THC level. In order to prove that it's marijuana, the THC level must be above point zero three. We don't have the capacity or the equipment here in Douglas County to test the marijuana to prove that the THC level is above the point zero three. The Georgia Bureau of Investigation does have a machine. That machine costs two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Plus, they must have someone who is in fact able to operate that machine, and they must also buy the chemical for that machine. Our sheriff department here does not have that machine. The GBI will only test what we call felony amounts of marijuana, more than one ounce. And, you know, a lot of people don't know what an ounce of marijuana looks like, less than one. So I brought some, so you all can see what we normally have to prosecute. This is taken out from our vault. Less than an ounce of marijuana is a very small amount. You can pass that around. This has to be tested to be proven that it is in fact marijuana. The largest amount we have is this, which is less than an ounce. Right now, all of these cases here, we cannot prosecute them, because we can't prove that it is in fact marijuana. We know it's marijuana, but can we legally prove that it's marijuana? The answer is no. So what we're proposing is a county ordinance. A county ordinance is, you know, it's for the person to actually plead guilty. They can be placed on probation. They can get a fine up to a thousand dollars. The only difference is, it won't be put on their criminal history. That's the only difference. That way, right now, we have more than forty cases in our, just only marijuana cases. In our office, that we can, that we cannot prosecute. Also, we have cases where they may have one charge in addition to the marijuana charges. So what we're having to do now, we'll prosecute them on that one charge, just to get, to go ahead and resolve the case and dismiss the marijuana charge. But if we can prosecute that marijuana charge under the county ordinance, that gives us additional... And by the way, they won't just be paying a fine. They can also be required to get a clinical evaluation. Everything that is applicable for it, the only thing's different is it will not be on their criminal history. Um, received an email today where the district attorney, uh, Mr. Leonard, understands that this would not in any way compromise the felony amounts of marijuana. It would be strictly for misdemeanor amounts of marijuana. And that way, we can resolve these cases. People can be punished, fines can be imposed, and we can go on. If not, you may have to end up dismissing these cases. And that's not what we want to do.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much.
Commissioner, I have a question. I just wanted to mention, uh, to the Solicitor, um, tab number two in the yellow asterisk, it says F, this ordinance is not intending in any manner to decriminalize the possession of marijuana, so...
Yeah, right.
That, that helps with that. No, you said it's not. I'm just looking at, get a little asterisk. Commissioner, I have a question.
Yes, uh, Mr. Solicitor, um, aren't the, in the state or whoever, aren't they in the process of coming up with testing that will differentiate between, uh, the hemp oil and the, uh, the hemp and the marijuana?
They, they have a machine right now that will do it. The GBI has a machine that will do that. However, they will not test misdemeanor amounts of marijuana.
But is this the first step to legalizing marijuana?
I don't know, I'm not a legislator.
Well, see, I don't know that much about the laws. Um, I'd like to, for someone to explain it to me more, um, that may be on the other side too, to show me the pros and cons to changing a law.
You're not changing the law. No, 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 no.
Well, you're implementing a new law.
I'm not implementing the law at all. I am, only thing I'm proposing is a county ordinance, which also is supported by the state law that says marijuana is illegal. What it does is give us a way to punish people who violate the law. Right now, we cannot. You understand that, right?
Well, a county ordinance can take place of the, uh, state law, I guess. I don't know enough about it. That's why I need someone to explain it more. It scares me when we start putting codes in there that kind of addresses a state law, you know? It's like, uh, open Pandora's box, so to speak. I just want to know more about it. Uh, Legal, have you looked at this? Do you, I know there was a lot of people interested in changing what she initially was bringing forward to us. Uh, you know, the sheriff had some problems with it and everything else. I'd like to hear what your side is.
If I may, the sheriff is in support of this, because he understands that we cannot prosecute. His deputies are happy that I'm finding a way to prosecute people who violate the law here in Douglas County.
So is this, uh, to have a public hearing about this?
Well, well, this is only to advertise that you'd have to have a public hearing, because you're creating an ordinance, so there would be a public hearing. This is on the agenda to advertise it.
To advertise it.
For a public hearing in the future. I will say, uh, Madam Solicitor and I met and her staff when she asked about this. This version has been worked up. I don't know how many times, Sonja, between you and I, but it's been shared with, the state court judges, it's been shared with the DA's office, it's been shared with the sheriff. And I think the original kinks that everybody was concerned with really aren't present in this anymore. And what I mean by that is this. Uh, the, our concern was, when you create an ordinance, there's a rule of lenity, which means that if you, if, if there's a lesser alternative sentence somewhere, that a felony could become an ordinance violation. But I've gotten confirmation from the folks that do all that, that they don't see the rule of lenity being a problem with this, meaning they don't see that they're going to lose, uh, felony cases to an ordinance violation. Uh, the other is thrown in to give, uh, Madam Solicitor, uh, options for dis- disposing of the case. Um, and I will say this, probably, uh, the only issue, if there is an issue, is if you can't prosecute, you're basically cutting the baby. And what I mean by that is that you're splitting the difference between two ends. If a misdemeanor's twelve months and a thousand dollar fine, and an ordinance violation is six months and a thousand dollar fine, but a non-prosecution is zero, you're really going to the middle ground to find an option for some of these cases. Now, having said that, whether they solve, she's correct about the hemp marijuana problem right now in the testing levels. The cost of doing it is almost astronomical prohibitively, so they don't, they really don't do it. Having said that, I don't know if they're going to solve that problem. I really don't know where this is heading. Uh, but it was her intent not to, uh, Madam Solicitor's intent not to decriminalize, but to have another safe haven for prosecutions. Now...
Are the judges on board with this?
Yes, they are.
All of them?
Well, the state court judges.
State court judges are judges.
Here's what, here's what the judges were there. We, uh, we send this out to judges, and the judges won't comment. But if they had a concern that was negative, they would let me know. The reason why, they don't, they're supposed to be neutral. They can't, whatever. So I was more concerned about what Ryan Leonard was going to say, because I didn't want to give away a heroin case to an ordinance violation. But I have had communication with the judges. I don't think, although this is concurrent jurisdiction, the state court and magistrate court is going to create a caseload problem for Susan. I think she's worried about that. It really is going to give her a chance to dispose of this in a way... If you're on the other side, what you're interested in is your driver's license and your criminal record. This will cause them, I would suggest, probably more time... This will cause them, I would suggest, probably more times than not, the cost of hiring a lawyer to defend against something like this versus paying the fine and accepting the consequences probably will help remove those cases. That's reality, and I think that's what Sonya's trying to achieve here. I can't tell you where this is going long-term, because you know what's going on in the nation and you see it on the TV, so I don't know. But I will tell you, she does have a testing problem right now. Sonya, did I cover letter eight?
Yes.
I think everybody's, we've talked to Sheriff Pounds, just so everybody knows. I've talked to him personally. I've talked to Ken Connor. There was concerns about the first rounds, but the sheriff actually met with Sonya, met with me, met with the DA. In fact, he marched up to the DA's office to make sure we weren't going to mess up any of his cases that he's really worried about. And the word I've gotten back from the sheriff is, he's fine with this. The word I got back from Ryan Leonard today was, I think the solicitor has mentioned, they don't see it as interfering with their felony prosecutions. So I don't know what else I can ask. I don't think a judge should go on the record and say, "Here's my response to it," because that would be them taking a position on something that's purely the legislative branch of government's, this is y'all. This, y'all are doing it at her request, it's a legislative function if y'all are going to do it. So the executive branch, the judicial branch probably won't weigh in. But if there was a problem, I promise you, my phone would have been lit up. And I think it's down to where it's not getting lit up anymore.
Is that it all?
It got lit up for a while, but now it's calm.
Okay. Thank you so much, John. I'll show my office.
Yeah, we should be going, just getting along this morning. But to this point, this is an important one. Not very often in 10 years I've been here that we've ever exercised a truly legislative policy. We do a lot of code changes. I mean, we don't really, we have the capacity. And so I appreciate, no, we can change this. Yes, I understand the state's power, I understand state laws, state statutes, but we at the local level can't affect things like that the way we want our county to operate. Right? And so Ken's right, like, no, this is our call. I'm not going to run through the conversation, kick the can back up to the state, when we actually have the authority and power to do it locally. All politics is local, so this is something, again, this is just a notice of hearing, but we need to look at this. And I agree with Madam Goddard, look at every angle, what this is about, and take a position. But this, you're right, everybody's trying to be neutral on this when they're trying to slide this one through. It's like, okay, let's go. But let's not hide from what this may potentially be. I don't want to do the citizens like that, the citizens go, "Look at this issue. This is major. It is up to the board commissioners, whether or not we're going to enact this locally." And so I appreciate the conversation, but this is just a notice, that's what I'm saying, Madam Sheriff, we shouldn't get too deep into this, because this is just a notice. I mean, all of this will come out later. So, ayeo.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
And thank you, Solicitor, for taking the time to explain it to me, and also just reemphasizing that this ordinance is not intended in any manner to decriminalize marijuana. Because, you know, I had those conversations with you, because me and you both know it's not legal in the state of Georgia. So thank you for clarifying and bringing my mind to peace and order, because I don't support marijuana in any way, form, or fashion. But you've made a statement that you're not trying to decriminalize it. In fact, you're trying to see what you can do to penalize.
Absolutely.
So, okay, thank you so much, and we look forward to a public hearing on this. Thank you. All right, I have one more judge that came in. She's here, and I'm trying to get our judicial system out here this morning. Judge Walker, could you please come forward? Good. And it's tab number 11, Authorization to Approve an Agreement with the Georgia Department of Penal Services and Authorize a New Physician as a Partner on Case Manager to Be Funded Through DFCS. And the judge court, I'm sorry, and the juvenile court in the amount of $31,200 and amend the budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Judge Walker.
The state of Georgia has received $1 million through the administration of children and families to address issues with regard to infants and toddlers that are born exposed to substance use. We have developed a program called Baby Steps Recovery to get out into the community and try to get out front and reduce the number of women who are pregnant and using, to make sure that women who are pregnant and using are in treatment, and to reduce the exposure of the infant and toddler. We have gotten a lot of support and acclaim across the nation for the program. The state is now requesting to put someone in with Gabe so that they can be trained in an effort to replicate this all over the state. So this is something that will come from the state, the county will benefit from it. But the purpose is to train the state in what we've done with the QIC grant so that it can go statewide. And the plan is, in fact, to implement what we're doing statewide. We're not sure how, we're not sure when, but as part of Family First Prevention Services Act that goes into effect in 2021, this is the type of work that they want to do, which is early preservation work to keep families together. So the impact to the county is that we need space. We will use some additional office supplies. We have had in our budget. So other than space, there's not any specific financial impact, because we've already budgeted for Gabe, for her staff, for her, not for her staff, she is the staff, for her needs.
Any questions from the board vice chairman of law?
Yes. Is it almost time?
Almost time.
Almost time. Again, you're efforts in, what you've contributed to the county, to the state, to the nation in your usual capacity, it's appreciated. I'm just leaning on every word, like, oh my, it's almost over, but it's appreciated. So I won't, it'll come a time for that, those comments, but I want to acknowledge, just in case you don't come to board us again before the end of the year. That being said, this is necessary to extend further. You said space, where is it going to be at? C S B or somewhere here locally in the courthouse?
It'll be here in the courthouse.
It'll be in the courthouse. You've got capacity.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Compton.
Judge Walker, this part town person, will they need transportation from the county as well to do their job? Because this is case management, so we don't worry for kids.
The, how we're handling it, we may be able to cover some of that and finish through our grant till our grant is over, because we've still got money in that grant. We have to spend it all down until September 30th. But out of that line item, but we can also use the transportation for reimbursement for mileage to the extent that we need to.
Okay. Ayeo, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Compton. All right, thank you so much, Judge Walker, for coming in. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, pivot back, and also board commissioners, I'll pivot back to our presentations. We have a presentation, it is from SLOSS. We're going to go with our SLOSS update first, Mr. Terry Gable, could you please come forward? And we're trying to keep everything tight going forward. Yeah, we're trying. You can just give us a high level view?
Yes, I will do my best to give a high level view.
The highlights.
The highlights. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Terry Gable, I'm on Out the Belly, and I'll be giving the November SLOSS report again. So again, we'll be doing September revenues, work through October, with about 30 months in the overall program. And time permitting, David's got a short presentation on vendors, if that exists. So as far as invoices paid to date, we have approximately $32.2 million for the program. Firing EMS jumped up close to a couple million dollars this month, past month, and so the transportation, that's got us up. And then parks stayed roughly about the same as they had been. So with that, we'll move into the revenues. The revenues fortunately staying solid, they're still above the projection line, we're probably about $130,000 over projections. It came down a little bit from last month, some of that probably did expect, but hopefully heading into the holidays, we'll see an uptick like we've seen in the past, and of course, finishing out SLOSS year three hopefully will stay in the black and see some solid numbers. There's the raw numbers, 2.169 million for the month of September. We have an overage, we're showing overage produced for year three so far, $1.2 million. Money's there above our projections. And then for the overall program, the 30 months, we've collected $62.87 million.
Keep going, I thought I didn't have a corner. But Commissioner Mitchell is right there.
$62.8 million is the total collections. If you look, compare that to the projections, overall, the program, we're about $2.5 million over projections, so we're looking real good there. On our bond obligations, we made the small payment back in October, the first payment, and of course, the biggest payment of the program is April 1st, and it's at $18.9 million for this year. So once we get through that, the payments, the amounts will start dropping somewhat. Okay, just quickly going through some project updates. The digital radio system, good news with that, is Motorola's finally gotten the signed document, it's been signed, SEC and SHIPPO. They don't have it in hand, it's got to be advertised for 30 days. We're in that period now, and I think they're anticipating getting that letter around December 9th or 10th. At that point, weather permitting, they'll stack that last tower in South Douglas, and that'll complete all the towers. Everything else at that tower is done at that site, except to stack that tower, he thinks he can do that in two weeks. So with that, after the 1st of the year, the chief and I think consist of what's to go ahead and do an immediate test early on, go live the first week in January, so we're getting real close to getting the thing kicked off. And then the final test be done in the spring when the foliage is on the trees, as we've talked about. So good news there with the document from SHIPPO and SEC being signed. Just real quick, with the ambulance and the fire truck, both the ambulance, the chief and I will be doing a final inspection on it this month, and we should be expecting the delivery this year. And then the fire truck will be in the spring of next year, they'll start fabrication, and we'll be looking at picking it up, hopefully delivery in early summer, the fire truck. Staff vehicles are completed now, we've taken delivery of those. And that, for right now, wraps up our firing EMS. Real quick, we'll run through transportation. Resurfacing is going on very well. We, C W Matthews made good progress in September and October when it states are hot, but they're about 80% complete with the resurfacing, the 2019 resurfacing, and shouldn't have a problem finishing it by the end of the year. The payment evaluations, Moe and Al Kebbel's staff got with Miguel's staff Friday and did the training. We finally got everything set up, they got the license in, so that was turned over to Miguel on Friday, and Mike Michael will be available for Miguel as time, as he moves through this year, if he's got questions and needs any assistance on it. Still, Neil Road is one of our intersections, it is in the, really the right-of-way stage now, Miguel has that, and is working on title searches and appraisals now, so we'll have to work through that into probably the first part of next year, we'll get that completed, and we'll be hopefully ready to let that project in the spring of next year. Bright Star and John West, Miguel has that in his queue to let, everything is done and ready to go, just a matter now of getting it through, purchasing, getting it advertised with it. And then, of course, Sweetwater Church is the, we already have a contractor on board there, we're just waiting on a notice to proceed, and Miguel's setting up a pre-construction with them. As soon as that's done, we'll give them a notice to proceed, and they'll be, you'll see some work going on in the intersection, obviously, with pending, I mean, pending on what they... And then finally, with Chapel Hill Road, SEI's working, we met with them about a couple of weeks ago, they're still in the design stage with this, preliminary stage, and Miguel's getting cost comparisons from them also. But our goal with that is, is to get him right-of-way plans by the end of the year, once final decisions are made with Miguel and any information is going to be provided to the board. Right now, everything's moving along with the design and trying to get right-of-way plans completed for it. Highway 5 at Douglas Boulevard, this will be done by the ONCOF consultant, and Miguel's real plus of getting a task order set up for that, once he gets it approved by the board, we'll start designing on that, hopefully this year, if not, it'll be the first of the year they'll get started with it. Post Road Bridge, no change there. Miguel was making progress with the one parcel that he had to acquire for an easement, but we're making progress for that now, so it shouldn't be any hiccups with that, when the contractor's ready to come in and start next year. Our sidewalk projects are moving along quite well. Miguel, with Lithia Springs, we had one parcel left, that was the church. It shouldn't be too long before they get that closed out. And then Chestnut Lodge was, we had four parcels there that were presented to the board for approval, options on those, and he's moving forward with closing those. And then Manchester High, we are still working with GDOT and getting the permit for, to do the sidewalk out there, the design's pretty much complete, but they did come out with some comments, and it's required going back and looking at the plans, and for the designer to make a few changes in the plan. We'll keep you updated on that as we move through that process. Whitestone color is well underway. I've got a couple shots here. So they've gotten started and will continue, weather permitting, through...
Can you go back to the first slide on Whitestone?
You want to go back now? That's not the new color. No, they had removed, that's the old cover they had removed, that's the first thing they did when they got out there, got the site set up and removed the old pipe, what was left. And then this is a more recent picture. Had everything removed, got it cleaned up, and ready to move, go to the next phase of Our streetlights, we are moving forward with that, still waiting on the I-20 permit and GDOT to start that work, and then we also have board-approved another purchase order for some additional locations for the streetlights, and we'll be keeping board abreast on that as we move through, get everything set up with Greystone and George Power. Highway 92 at Mount Vernon, GDOT has a contractor on board, we're waiting on, I don't know if Miguel's got any updates, we're waiting to start work any day now, to get that much-needed signal up and in place. So, good news there. Highway 92 at Riverside, this will be, again, it'll be one of the ONCOF consultants that'll do a preliminary design and a scope on this project, and make decisions on how to move forward with it, once Miguel gets them on board. And of course, the Lee Road widening project, we've got that on our schedule now, funding identified for, the plan right now is to let this project June, June of next year. I had this last time, I didn't get to do the presentation, but those are the new, two new dump trucks that were, Miguel got for maintenance, with the snowplows on it. All right, with that, we'll move into parks. So this past month, we took bids on Deerlit, and they've been evaluated, presented to the Parks Committee, and on the agenda, we've got a recommendation for an award, and that was also for the multipurpose rec center, the same, and it's on the agenda for award, and also the senior center. And the good news is, is the bids came in, we had good bids, good participation, and we've got, obviously got some good bids that were, that were awardable, and feel good about where the numbers are, and it's also coming in pretty good for the overall parks budget. So, good news there, it looks like bids are, prices seem to be coming down some from what the architects are telling me. We originally had these priced, as far as our estimates go, back early in the year, we were up around $250 a square foot. They're telling me, and based on the numbers we're seeing, the prices, prices of stuff is coming down some, so that's to be in our favor. And then with the last two, Bill Art and Fair Play, those are the two that we did take bids on there on hold till we get all the numbers evaluated, gets, board makes a decision on moving forward with those, but it certainly looks better now than it did a couple months ago when we were trying to anticipate what the bids were going to come in. And I believe Gears, I wrapped up on his equipment for 2019, we may have a little bit of money left there. And with that, quick overview. I'll take questions, and then we'll get David up.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'll be quick. All right, I'll be quick. We appreciate that, and again, we're getting used to this, but you still have to say it for the record, for the public, though we do get our readings. but you still have to say it for the record, for the public, though we do get our readings prior to this. Two things, Parks Rec, obviously, I'm encouraged by that process, I know there's always an assertion that we may be over budget because of costs and now we're under budget because of costs, we can't control that. You guys do the best you can in negotiation, obviously, we write good RFQs, RFPs, we put them out there and the market does what it does, but I wanna acknowledge Commissioner Mitchell, you guys were, you know, again, you benefited from that, that good look, because at the end of the day, it's just like with the jail, did you come in on time, on budget, on the hundred twenty million dollars? It did, but certain parts of that jail was over, some of it was under, we've got plenty of books to validate that, so I wanna, I don't want, sometimes I hear that, okay, the community center went over a little bit and this compromise, it's like, no, it's all relative, nothing downstream is promised, nothing is guaranteed, it's whatever the dollars will allow based on the overall economy, so if it allows you to get good rates, great, we can do more, if it doesn't, you can't, but that's one of the things, what we decided as a board was not to commit to something that we knew we could not deliver, that's why we came up with these categories and percentages, that's all we're held to, those projects that if we have enough money, we'll get to it, but it's based on, hey, whatever's in head of it, if it knocks something out down there, well then you do another SLOSS, you get to it, but I wanna acknowledge that because this is, we're about to go into the turn here, obviously, our big payment is due what, April what?
First.
April first. April first is our big payment, and so, I guess I wanna acknowledge the process that you guys are going through, and this is something I brought up with Commissioner Mitchell this morning, which is, okay, you've got a little savings, don't go down there reaching to try to accelerate things from a schedule perspective, if you haven't, map it to cash, unless you're gonna be right back in the same place, so can you speak to that and what your realization is how we avoid that?
Well, again, we, you know, we developed the monthly schedule and that certainly has helped, and I mentioned it last time, as far as tying, tying the cost to the schedules of the projects, and we're looking at them very close, the numbers certainly helps that because all these, these vertical structures that we're talking about now, we're in year four, when things were gonna tighten up, but it's helped the parks budget, we're gonna monitor it very close as we, and forecast it out to where we're at and make decisions as far as moving forward, when we can pick up the next, the next project.
Yeah, and that, again, that's important, I know how, again, you've got staff who like, you guys just wanna boost up, look, we're doing work, look, we're busy, look what we're delivering, but if you don't keep up with that math, it's gonna get off and it's like, no, you can't get ahead, I understand, we may have a delay, there's called slack in project management, everything's not on a critical path, but you can put everything on a critical path if you try to throttle it. So, it's one of those like, come on, staff, work with the schedule, stay with the schedule to the program directors, you guys don't be trying to pull stuff up to show, look how busy we are, look what we're delivering, look what we can squeeze in here, Mark created a schedule beginning with by design, he laid it out based on cash flow and to the spirit of that, yes, we reforecast, but if you guys get so thirsty and wanna deliver, look, look at us, look at, look how, you're gonna blow this, there's no way around it, we're gonna go through the exercise we just went through to try to like, come on, guys, back up, so I'm gonna emphasize that to your point, the lesson learned is stick to the schedule, it's cool, if the environment or the economy causes us to have to slow something down, it's okay, if it comes in a little bit more than we anticipated, we can't control that, the cost materials is what it is, we don't have our own materials nowhere, so we have to buy it at rate, it's whatever it is, let's be mature about this, like we talked about in the budget, let's have a very seasoned conversation about financials, we did talk about, the media wasn't there, but we recognize that we, you know, some of our narratives get, get off and it almost annails that we don't really comprehend the full picture of how this works, but I wanna appreciate you guys' efforts and stuff, and so, thank you, now are you back?
Thank you so much. All right, thank you, you said David Good.
Thanks, God.
This is good, you could, your presentation.
All right, thank you, I'm good, almost afternoon, Commissioners, I'm David Good, Communications Director for the SLOSS program, and behind you, you see our SLOSS vendors update, we are now at a hundred total vendors and that's only a hundred total vendors working on seventy-one projects, of those seventy-one projects, forty-one of them are active projects and thirty of them have reached their completion. And of these vendors, sixty-six percent, about two-thirds of the total vendors are local, which basically means both Douglas County and within thirty miles of Douglas County, the rest are either out of the state or out of that thirty mile piece. And right now, we do get a chance to talk to businesses, go to different events in order to reach people and reach businesses who wanna do business with Douglas County. Next up, you will see the total amount that the local receiver in Franklin County is about twenty-one thousand dollars, twenty-one million dollars, and that represents about forty-eight percent of SLOSS, the other twenty-two million is relatively, most of it is packed into, excuse me, most of that is packed into Motorola, which is right now showing that roughly fifteen to sixteen million dollars within, within this project. And then, we are actually in within the year, middle of year three, as soon as April turns over, we'll be at the turn and we'll be going into the latter half of the SLOSS. And the last part is actually our minority participation and this is for only active projects, and minority participation is about forty-seven percent of all those active projects, so when you saw that list of forty-one, of those forty-one projects, forty-seven percent of them have minority participation. And one thing I did wanna touch on is that in the last meeting, a couple of Commissioners were asking about how we come up looking for these minority participations, the state of Georgia has a website where they talk about DVEs and I'm able to go to that website as well as the Chamber of Commerce, just to see if these companies are minority companies and that's how I came up with that, and with that, I'll take any further questions.
Any questions? Sounds good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner? Yeah, just, real quick, maybe, Madam Carr, all right, so you go to the state and you look at what they do, you look at the chamber, what are we doing internally within the county? And I know you're trying to keep up with this as it comes online, but what, how are we going to approach, through business license or whatever, occupational permit, how do we approach capturing that information internally within the county and really, all of the companies that are already on the books, what are we gonna do about that, how do we clean this up, because I know it's non-existent, it was never a real focus on that, but what is the approach going forward to clean that up, what is, what is the new direction?
Vice Chair, this is Bill Peacock, Purchasing Director, I'll try to address that. As we discussed in our purchasing oversight committee meetings, we're working with IAS to develop a availability for us to designate DVEs directly on the vendor application when they're submitted, either online or on paper. Today, we don't capture that, we don't have a field within the system to put that in and my staff is working with IAS to have that developed so that we can do that. As far as the historical records, we really don't have any way to go in and value a business, whether it's a DBE or not, in a very minute way, we do have some fields that say whether or not they're DBE women domed or different things, but it doesn't capture all of the different categories of DVEs. We are working to do that, but we don't have that available today, but it is something that's in process.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carrton, please, the chairman of that committee, y'all, press it forward, so thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Good, both Commissioners, we have just a few more things, believe it or not, we're further along than probably you think, so we, I'm just gonna push through it and, sorry, if you could just minimize your questions, if you could now, but I'm not gonna, certainly restrict you. Okay, we are now on tab number six, which I believe is just a discussion, it's approval for beer and wine sales, it's alcohol license for most southwest real of eight ninety-four Thornton Road, Lithia Springs, Georgia, and that'd be Tammy, pardon the mark, is that Mike?
Yes, Madam Chair, won't be here tomorrow night, but Tammy's got all the materials together, they've gone through the RAS certification, applicant wasn't able to be here at the last one, last meeting, because they have to be here in person, so he will be here tomorrow in person for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Manager Rockers. All right, we're gonna move on to tab, any questions forward? Tab number seven, memorandum of understanding with the Douglas County Economic Development Authority, legal department, attorney.
I'll take that to start off with, Madam Chair.
County Administrator.
So, we have an existing agreement that was approved on August twentieth with the Development Authority, this is to spend the hotel motel tax funds from, that were remaining, left over from two thousand fifteen through eighteen. Now, the agreement that you have on, it's a tax to the agenda, is the one that was approved in November of two thousand eighteen, that actually has been revised, so we inadvertently put that agenda out, I mean, that MOU on the computer. So, the new and, but you do have the list, the task list, that was also approved on July twenty-second, the only difference is, is the Tourism Department has revised this to add the pillars that were discussed at our last meeting and they show the percentages of each pillar that would be spent out of these line items. So, we've had this on the agenda a couple of times, back and forth, last time, I think we were trying to get through the chamber, so this is just for the TCT funds from two thousand fifteen through eighteen, and then the chairman and I had had discussions with the vice chair about proceeding with this agreement to spend these funds by the MOU.
Any questions?
Yeah, and I just, be respectful to my peers, this is a discussion only item, it's just, you need to look at what this is, and I appreciate it, Commissioner, the point was not to necessarily go through the chamber, yeah, we lost some time on that because our goal was to avoid that altogether, but one point is, this was to be facilitated by Chris Pumphrey, but not necessarily through the structure of Colin, that's not what the expectation was, so I want y'all to make sure y'all look at what this is that we're discussing, because in other words, Colin has a budget, stay focused, the chamber has a budget, stay focused, the four hundred thousand was above and beyond, that needs to be addressed, and what I wanted Chris Pumphrey was to be here, for him to speak to, do you understand what we're asking for? We don't need no mistranslation of what the intent was, we don't need no, no slight, it's like, Colin stays on her current budget, she's fully loaded, deliver what you're supposed to be delivering, chamber, focus on yours, this is four hundred, above and beyond, it's over here to the side, how are y'all gonna handle that? And that, that, that's why this is the discussion only, so there's no need to belabor this, this is, unless y'all wanna weigh in, but Reed, what's here?
Commissioner Carrton. Okay, so, just, I have an understanding that MOU that's attached is not the right thing?
No, that's, it's been, it was amended in August of two thousand and eighteen, it was amended to add the four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, at the time is what it was, which is now three hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
So, this MOU take out, and what should be in its place is the MOU for the, for the Development Authority?
Yes, well, I see, it's essentially the same, and just instead of that one seventy, it adds a three ninety-nine to it, it adds a three ninety-nine and then the list that's below here is attached, is attached to it.
Okay, I see what you're saying, so just take out the value, but essentially, it would say the same, stay with the economic Development Authority?
Yes.
To spend the hotel motel tax that was accumulating?
Yes, based on the private work class that's attached to the agenda, which was approved back in July office, July.
All right, thank you, okay, all right, then we'll go to the next slide.
Okay. But, but again, July did not take into consideration the move since then, that's why I'm like, that's why this can't be voted on tomorrow or there's an extra ticket, I need to look at this. We started with that, that was twenty-five thousand dollars and it was a focus on pillar one, all right, that was gotten rid of, now it's a full four hundred, three ninety-nine, that's pillar one, where's that being addressed? It's not, right, let's be clear on what this is and what the board was looking to hear, so that's what I'm saying, okay, if Chris Pumphrey's not here and I don't wanna put you in an awkward place, Mark, but the Development Authority needs to be here, do y'all understand what we're asking for to be fulfilled here, and you can't answer that.
No, evidently, I do not.
Yes, it's okay.
No, I didn't know it was only for pillar one for this three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, but we can change that to whatever the board, whatever the board desires.
But that was what we said in the last meeting, and that's what, on this one, and I appreciate, I appreciate District Two, Mr. Pierce's comment about communication, like, all right, y'all, hearing what we're trying to get done, it's like we've been trying to communicate and we're wanting, I'm having to keep, like, you're still not there yet, come on, guys, don't make this hard.
Let me ask you a question, Vice Chairman, I'm gonna let you finish your question.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't wanna belabor it, but that's why I keep pushing, I'm listening to the commentary, like, y'all still are not, y'all are not on the same page, that's why I was, I was sensitive, say, make this a discussion only, to my peers respectfully, look at this so that we can get begun with this, we got forty-four days to get this done, we got one more meeting to approve this and be done and let whomever, Chris Pumphrey, go do what he do, but I want y'all to be clear so there's no disappointment, no objectives, no frustration, no any of that, because it's not that hard, we just need the support of staff, the cooperation to help us line this up, the bill objective that the state said y'all should be doing anyway, and that's all we're asking to do, we're not touching existing operations, leave them alone, that's what I'm saying, we're acting like we didn't bring this up, that it's not supposed to be business as usual, just, that's, let it go, okay.
Mark, pillar one is what, what is pillar one?
So, there's five pillars, pillar one's African-American history and culture, pillar two, outdoor recreation and sports, pillar three, food and drink in Georgia grown, pillar four is music and film, pillar five, iconic Georgia locations.
So, I'm just trying to make sure I understand, Vice Chairman, so you're saying three ninety-nine to pillar one?
Yeah.
Which is African-American.
That's what we've been talking about from day one.
I didn't see it that way, I thought we were gonna look at it and just make sure that it was evenly distributed.
No, the twenty-five thousand dollars when we first started this was supposed to be dedicated to that, like, it was, all right, stay with me, but then when we went through all of this, it says, we can't do that, we gotta do it this way, see, this, no, guys, this ain't gonna move from, like, no, it went from twenty-five to four hundred, it's like, okay, it's now like, okay, we'll just eat this for the twenty-five, it's like, no, it could have been done with this, if it wasn't for all the maneuvering, all the power moves, all the try to shape this, don't like, let this go, let this go right now, I understand, that's why I said, look at this, I knew we're all on different pages, discussion only, that's what we've been saying pillar one, you didn't even know what pillar one was, it's like, are y'all, and then you wanna push a marketing plan, it doesn't, that was the point that Madam Carrton brought up, y'all don't even know what it is, so we're holding you accountable to the very thing that you're supposed to be doing, now since we wanna scramble and bring a marketing plan to sort of like, backslide this thing, it's like, and then we were like, okay, we pushed it twenty-five, we thought this was like, no, guys, don't, like, we said, we wanna push this right now, let it go, I just, that's it, y'all asked me, I said, just make it a discussion only item, look at this, and then we get back together and make a decision, but not, now, go back and pull every tape, I just spoke on this, and if you were listening, I, I was hitting it, yes, pillar one, yes, yes, we were dancing around this, Ken's point was, kind of like, well, they ain't gonna do it, the chamber, I said, let them say no, we get it, were y'all not paying attention to that dialogue, man, I get the point, it's like, okay, with those who are, who could hear, you know what this was about, right, no, the chamber doesn't wanna take that, like, that's fine, don't put them in that spot, I had to, I talked to Sarah, I said, look, this wasn't about you, this is our own internal shenanigans, huh, stop, let this go, let it go.
Commissioner, me and you have meet, Vice Chairman, we'll need to, because this will not be all or nothing, we'll talk about it, but of course, we need to be fair with this, and I believe, Mark, is it more than twenty-five thousand allocated for that pillar one?
Between, what's shown on here is twenty-five percent.
So, what is twenty-five percent of that, please?
Be a hundred, about a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand, I'm just saying, Commissioner, I just wanna compromise so we can move forward, we've been talking about this for, Reed, once, once you get a B in the bonnet, I mean, my bonnet is clear, I just wanna make sure we can move on, we've been talking about this for about three meetings and we just saying, okay, guys, back and forth, we went, we've gone from twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand, I just wanna make sure going forward that it's balanced, all of the, you know, that it's balanced going forward for all the pillars, and I guess we didn't really.
I didn't, go ahead.
We, we really didn't, I guess, in the past, didn't give a lot of credit to pillars that didn't give it its justice, but going forward. But going forward, I wanna make sure that it is clear, that we will make sure that all the pillars are evenly distributed going forward in this county. But today, we just can't go with all of the three ninety-nine at one pillar, that's just totally unfair. Um, so it's gone from twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand, I think that's more than fair. And Commissioner and Vice Chairman, we'll, we can meet offline, but I've been ready to push this through, I've been waiting for three meetings.
I, I, I didn't yield, but I appreciate it, Vice Chair, I gotta. I, I get it, you leave your existing operations, who still have not acknowledged, so go back to the percentage that the chamber, in this product group. They haven't addressed in their current operation, for three years' aggregate, this is just an above, this allows you to catch up for something that in your current operations, you are not addressing. You're being convenient in the sense that we're calling it out, like, well, you haven't addressed it already. You got existing funds that are currently going on, that's not acknowledging it. But I just said, let the board vote, this wouldn't, like, no, let the board vote, let everybody vote, they're conscious on what they think the numbers gonna be, and how this plays out. Nobody was trying to belabor this, but, uh, I, I, I'm gonna disagree with that hundred, it's like, no, that's not what we've been talking about, we've been working on. You guys have been in the meetings, you've been in the rooms, and all of a sudden, we're gonna act like, what's gonna be fair? When you haven't acknowledged it to this point, it's like, we're trying to catch up for something that wasn't acknowledged, so it's like, the work that's been in there, and at one more time, this staff has tried to redirect this thing that could have made it very, very convenient, and now it's got to this point, like, no, you can't, just like, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll give you this. That's, that's not being fair, that's not even honoring the fact that, what was it, the pleasure of the board, you weren't respecting the pleasure of the board. To your point, we shouldn't be here, I said that in the last meeting. So, but it's not a B and a V, it's like, no, you, you may not wanna do it this way. It's respecting what the direction we wanna go, it's knowledge, not trying to give me a last minute hand, say, well, okay, you ain't getting to us, what you gonna do? It's like, oh, no, we can play through this, and that's why, like, it, it's, it's like, it's three years. Like, we may wanna revisit that, I shouldn't be here, I should, I should have a lo, a little bit more support, and it was only twenty-five thousand dollars. And now you, you caused us to, like, really look at this thing like, oh, boy, what's y'all doing over here? And it opened up a whole bigger picture, that we didn't know that, that, what you currently was doing was not lined up with the state, it's illegal, but it allowed us to do it. So it opened up a whole different, like, okay, wait, we gotta clean this thing up, so that's why I'm like, well, if you would've supported us what we did, we'd been done. But now we've gotten into this thing, it's like, well, if we had a little bit more support, we wouldn't even be here. Are you?
Thank you so much, Vice Chairman.
Alright.
So, so where are we then? Right, exactly, so, so somehow, some way, we gotta at least acknowledge where we are, or where we're going. So, the question still on the table is, where are we? Where are we going, and what is that? So, um, and, and, and it's what we're doing. So, and, and I mean that, 'cause i- if we just walk away now, then I don't think you have any clear directions as to what this really is. Unless I'm missing something, I don't know. So, I'll, I'll, I'll yield to that point, and then I may have some other comments, but I just wanna make sure that we all, you know, going in one direction, because it doesn't sound like we are.
So, it should just be discussion. One of the reasons why it was brought up is because these pillars were never, never addressed.
Okay.
The Tourism, um, Department, I'm assuming just did not know, and so I wanted to educate them, and so I brought it to their attention. And I at least wanted them to say, okay, I acknowledge that you did this, they did it way after the fact. I, I got a lot of pushback that I wasn't expecting, then, Commissioner, from the staff of the Tourism Department with that. So I brought it to, um, Commissioner Robinson's attention, and we looked at it and found out it was wrong. The structure of it was wrong all the way around, and so, um, our attorney has brought to our attention how we can straighten it out. And straightening it out, it won't be done overnight, so. I haven't been in all of the discussions, but it seems like we can still carry out the mission, we'd just be doing it through the Economic Development Authority. But we need to discuss that.
Okay.
We need to discuss that, and we need to discuss how these pillars will be addressed.
Okay.
And the main one being African-American history and culture and tourism, because it's never been addressed, ever. We've spent money in these other categories, food, drink, and Georgia grown, we've spent money on food and drink, outdoor recreation, we have a hot ranger festival. We do put it in other segments, but that one segment, Douglas County has never addressed. And so being a new commissioner, and I am an African-American woman, everybody can see that, we do have those parts that we want people to know about that exist here in Douglas County. So that was my reason for at least pulling it out.
I yield, Vice Chairman. Well, just before, we got, uh, again, that one pillar, and I realize, you said it's been years, and I realize it has been years, but can we make it all up in this one moment? Uh, we certainly, twenty-five thousand was the first suggestion, the first gesture, and we're at a hundred thousand, and I'm just trying to, what I'm trying to do is leverage to make sure the others don't fall short. Certainly, I, I vindication belongs to the Lord, and I don't have time to look at what happened in the past, but what I'm trying to do is make it full, uh, right going forward. Uh, a hundred thousand is quite enough, and then going forward, still, we wanna make sure that that is, there's an equilibrium between all categories. I think what I'm doing is feeling, kinda punished for some things that happened before my arrival, but since we picked up on it, I appreciate you, Commissioner Carleton, for taking a deep dive and looking at it. Twenty-five thousand was the initial request, a hundred thousand, that's, that's about four years' worth of, and going forward, it'll probably be a hundred thousand instead of zero. And I'm, I'm so sorry for what happened prior years, and I've been good as an African-American woman, that's also, I understand. Um, I just wanna go forward, we just go forward with the vote tomorrow, and just see where we go from here, because guys, we, we're running out of time. We can talk about it still, this is an opportunity for discussion, Lisa, hopefully by tomorrow, before this arrives, we can still talk individually. I wanna meet with the Vice Chairman, and we'll chat, and see what he, because I'm looking at compromising at this moment.
Yes, one, that's why I said I wanna come back into this comment, when we kinda got some resolve, we're going, so I defer to, uh, to me of the chair to say, what will, what's your direction? If there is a, if you have any direction, is that, is that your assignment?
I wouldn't say we vote on it, because I feel the, you know, I feel that others at the table want to have some say in it. We need to discuss it, because everybody may not be on board with that. So we do need to have a discussion, as opposed to trying to push it to a vote, that's just my sentiment, since you asked.
What do you say, face the chair, chair what, not the tourism?
Oh, not the chair of tourism, no.
Okay.
I'm a chair of purchasing, I would say.
'Cause I, I, I guess we might say that because it came, that this whole.
Exactly.
Thing came about from your discussion, and your, your deliverables, and your discussion with the whole makeup, so that's why, I mean, long chair, to mean that, make you a chair of something that you're not. However, uh, okay, I guess, so, um, with that, I, I, I guess, Madam Chair, that's kinda your call, I mean, but it doesn't appear as though it's ready for a vote. But I think if you just wanna make it pass the vote, I don't know, I'm just testing the, the waters, but.
Commissioner, how do you, you have any, any plateaus?
It was, I understand, but we've gone by the, the, um, we can't undo what's already been done. I didn't, we didn't even know about pillows, until this all came up. Um, and probably the piece of the big tourism board did not view that. So, uh, I don't think they would have deliberately, um, misallocated, whatever. But, um, I don't see how in the world four hundred thousand to be spent, I think now, is it the end of the year, they have to spend it? On just one category. Uh, so, um, what we want, the whole purpose of it is to bring people to Douglas County. And, uh, that we're kinda cutting off our nose, just spite our face, if we just direct it to just one ethnic group, and that's just my opinion. Because we want everybody to come, uh, it's not a matter of, you know, making amends for past mistakes. You know, I don't see the point of that, I'd like to go forward and correct it forward.
I will, we'll discuss it in a, we'll determine whether, I'll determine whether to be on the agenda tomorrow, because I'm trying to feel the pulse of the board, who will be here for a while, and I just, I'll just talk to y'all, each individually, and see where we go from here. We just, just adamantly say no, we'll, we gotta keep pushing, and, and when I say that, we gotta, we gotta reach a, um, solution. We have to come to terms on this issue. Again, I can't take care of what happened in the past, but today, I'm willing to, to think outside the box, open my brain and go forward with a viable solution, which I wanna make sure moving forward, everything is balanced. Alright, uh, board of commissioners, I'm gonna move on to, from this item, then I'll just, we'll try to get back with you on the move later. Tab number eight is resolution conditionally consenting to the inclusion of certain Douglas County, uh, valorum, what is it, valorum? Um, real property taxes in the confrontation of the tax allocation increment for the City of Douglasville Tax Allocation District. Number one, downtown and north side, to authorize the chairman and attorney to perform certain acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution to provide an effective date for this resolution and for other purposes, legal department.
Yeah, Madam Chair, uh, we've had great discussions with the City of Douglasville, based on the direction that we talked about before, that is really their tad. I talked to, uh, Steve Libowicz with our team, uh, I wanna say Friday, he's meeting with the city tonight, and has asked that we table this until the first meeting in, uh, December. Their timetable is just, they wanna get it done by the end of the year, but there are a couple of changes that he agreed to that were not, uh, over the top. But he wanted to talk to this client, so that we approve the resolution and item nine at the same time, so legal would be asking at the request of the city that eight and nine be continued and put on the agenda for the first meeting in December, uh, and I think we'll have final versions of both documents by then. We are working very closely, I also talked to Susan Lowfield, uh, the city attorney, this morning, and she's aware of this request for tabling, and she's fine with it. We're not artificially doing anything to them, so eight and nine, we'd ask you to table and put on the next agenda, Madam Chair.
Okay, Lisa, did you get that, table eight and nine? Alright, we just have a few more left. Tab number fourteen is authorization to amend the budget for communications and relations in an amount of seventeen thousand fifty dollars for the proceeds received from the September Saturdays. Sabrina?
Um, so all this is, Madam Chair, is, we always allow Rick's Department to run a deficit for the September Saturdays, because we don't wanna bring a check for you guys to amend each time, so we just kinda track it, and once we get all the checks, Rick gives me a list, I make sure we have all the funds, and we're just submitting as such, and giving it back for all the, um, sponsors and food vendors for September Saturdays.
Okay, three separate sponsor, alright, any questions for the board?
So how, yes, did you know what, what, let, let, what was the check again?
It was seventeen thousand fifty dollars, it was split up, it was fourteen thousand nine fifty from sponsors and twenty-one hundred from vendors.
Alright, so our sponsors, um, really, really, really carried that, I did, uh, we, we did have one faux pas, we, we had somebody who, um, obviously, um, we had Chick-fil-A, two sponsors of Chick-fil-A, to sort of compromise that, that was unfortunate, and again, with the administration, we need to do a better job of court aid. Uh, that was about a fifteen hundred dollars that could've went to that particular, um, Chick-fil-A sponsors' bottom line, and that was the intent, and we called two different ones, and it was like, oops. So, do, just, just, you know, let's make sure we synchronize, uh, whoever is sponsoring us should get, uh, if you got other sponsors that wanna pay for food, they should benefit from that, so, um, duly noted. But, okay, September Saturday, so what was that comparison to last year, you know? Druffey?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Alright, one reason I'm saying, is it growing, is it, is it, I mean, how is it doing in comparison? So I'd like to see for the past four years, can we show? Yeah, just at your convenience, you don't have to belabor it, we gotta keep moving, but just, can you show that, send me an email, the last four years, in comparison to this year? Are we growing, are we expanding? And again, I'm, I'm still thinking about Commissioner Moafier's staying neutered, that he's, he's throttling us by, you know, so, this, um, that's just a tease, but, but, but thank you for that, Dave.
I, I did hear comments that the second Saturday, it was nothing but the vendors and the people, and the booths. It was, uh, very sad, and we might wanna reduce it down to one, one weekend, just for food.
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that part of reducing it, I just think we just gotta get better at what we present. I think the presentation is kinda, has gone stale. Back to the numbers, though, uh, give me the numbers again, you said the numbers were?
Um, seventeen thousand fifty dollars, and that was just broke up between, uh, sponsors, fourteen thousand nine two.
Seventeen thousand clear cash or, or, I mean, after expense, I'm really trying to get to that bottom line.
Uh, what, Rick, can you answer how much it was fully expensed? I'm not sure of that number.
'Cause these numbers sound great, but then after you do expenses, then.
Yeah, some of it does come out of Rick's budget, um, but I'm not sure.
So make up of that.
Yeah, sure, um, Commissioner Mitchell, what I could tell you is that in terms of our expenditures, what we spend, uh, total cost of twenty thousand five hundred. And our total income, seventeen thousand fifty.
Oh, so it's a loss.
Yeah.
Okay.
Small deficit, which can be covered from what I have in my budget.
Got it, got it, so that's what I'm, okay, so, so not good, so now.
What I can tell you is the funding, um, the amount of funding that was donated to the school system, communities and schools.
We've already donated something to them?
Yes, it's, it's the vendor fees, what we do is, this is a fundraising event for communities and schools, and we raised over ten thousand dollars.
Okay, so let me try to get this right, so, so we go ahead and give the, based off the vendors, seventeen, oh, seventeen?
Non-food vendors.
Okay, okay, seventeen is what we kinda do some, some, uh, percentages with the school system, not after expenses. So I don't understand, so I, okay, do we take the, do we take, yeah, we can hold all the wags? Or do we just take the vendor side of things at seventeen, and we take that number divided amongst the, um, the school system? Okay, well, help me out there, so I think, sure.
Non-food vendors, the, um, the community marketplace, these are people, businesses, um, county booths, they're not charged. Seventy-five dollars is charged for non-food vendor space. That money goes to communities and schools as a fundraiser.
What is that money, what is that money?
Sure, seventy-five dollars for your space. Oh, what's, oh, I'm sorry, I, I got you.
Yeah.
Got you.
You can give me an estimate, it don't have to be exact.
Oh, just over, over ten thousand dollars.
Okay, we'll say ten thousand.
Yeah, like, ten thousand.
Got you, okay, so that number is, is divided, or, or percentages, or however it goes to the school system, that's my answer.
That number goes to communities and schools.
Yeah, so, yeah, what percentage goes where? All of it goes to them, or?
Yes, yes, I just, yes.
I'm like, this is, so what you saying there? So, so, but still, I, I mean, the concern is, so, for us to work at a deficit, is what I'm alluding to, I guess you guys probably understand what going is, to work at a deficit, and we still give, you know, this out, as a, as a fundraiser to them, I, I agree. But I think we, we gotta have some conversations about how do we restructure that to be, that it makes sense for us to pay for it, and still give the donations to the school, I mean.
We, we, we could, you know, pursue more sponsorships in terms of cutting costs.
That'll be ideal, that's the perfect way, that'll be perfect, if we can get more sponsors, you know, with that number than twenty thousand dollars. And, and it, it's still, it's, it's the deficit that we work from, so we lost money based on the numbers you just gave me, seventeen, seventeen fifty versus. Yes, roughly about three thousand dollars, we, we had to come out of your call, or out of the county's call, to, to do this. If I'm correct, and rough, this is out of rough math, and I think everybody's looking at the rough math, and that's why I'm a little concerned that. And that's why I'm a little concerned that it's like, we're trying to help raise money for the school system. I, I'm with you. I'm all for the kids and the school system to try and that, you know, put on a great event for them to help raise funds, funds for them. But not at a cost to the provider. If that makes sense.
And it probably does include the personnel.
Oh, yeah, cause they, they did the hours and stuff. Yeah, yeah, hours and all that kind of stuff. So, but it's okay. I mean, we, 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 we'll cross that bridge, but that, there's gotta be more conversation about that. And maybe I'm the only one that, that's kinda, no, okay, right. Yeah, cause that just, that just seems a bit much. Because my, my thoughts are, is how do we improve those two Saturdays a month? Because I see it's not where it needs to be. Because it's what we've been giving the county, uh, citizens for these last ten years. It's been the same thing and you're getting the same results, which is people are no longer attending, not, not as many people are attending. And I think, I think I shared that with you. I could look at the numbers this time around and the numbers before. So I think we gotta pick up the pace, but we can't pick up the pace and, and it costs us to help raise money for the school system, I guess. Unless you guys are, if, if, if you wanna give the money and you wanna do that, I mean, we can, I'm, I'm okay with it, but I just, I don't think that's a good look. I think if, if everybody was skin in the game, well, then, then need to put their skin in the game. So.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll, we'll come talk more about this in the program in a few days. Okay, I'll go back.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on.
Oh, so I guess the, the bigger, I'm sorry, but the bigger question was gonna be, I assume we'll be trying to figure out, do we go ahead and donate the money?
Oh, yeah.
That's right. That was a, the topic on the table, so we need to go back to that. So, maybe you can go back to that.
I think, correct me wrong, the money you're referring to has already been donated. This is just to amend the budget to give the money back to the county.
Yeah, with the loss of that three dollars.
Yes, sir.
Just wanna make sure we've been enough there.
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, and if you could for me, Sabrina, Sabrina, if you could just say, has this been a trend over the last ten years that we use to make a profit?
Um, I don't think we've ever had a profit.
Right, so this is, this is what happens normally. Just wanna make sure. We give our communications director some sense of comfort because he's probably thinking, man, they losing on my watch, but it's been that way. Okay.
Actually received a lot more. It looks like when I just pulled eighteen, we only had about nine thousand dollars last year.
Okay.
Well, in two thousand eighteen, the amount raised for communities and schools was thirteen thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars. So, and before that, it was thirteen thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars. You know, this time, not as much.
I just have one question. Community and school, that's a different program from the public education from the Douglas County Board of Education, or is it? Communities and schools is different, right?
Communities and schools of Douglas County is their foundation, like.
Okay.
It's just a, a name for their, for their foundation, I guess, whatever.
But it goes towards the public education?
Yes.
It goes towards?
Yes.
Particular schools that's under the CIs?
Doug, for Douglas County schools.
I think you understand the question. So communities and school is the nonprofit arm?
Yes.
For the Douglas County Board of Education or not?
Yes. Communities and schools for Douglas County is the nonprofit arm for Douglas County.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Everybody's okay? I'm gonna move on. All right. Tab number fifteen, authorization to issue holiday bonuses. Sabrina, again, our assistant director.
Um, as you all know, a lot of years, sometimes the board is generous. If there's money in the budget, they'll give a bonus bonus to the employees. And in past years, it's been anywhere from fifty to a hundred for part-time and full-time or, um, one fifty to two hundred. This year, we had enough in the budget for fifty for part-time and a hundred for full-time employees.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All right, we'll move on. Tab number sixteen, authorization for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office to approve annual agreement with the Superior Water Services, Inc. For water treatment services for the central plant for December first, um, twenty nineteen through November thirtieth, twenty twenty. For, in the amount of three thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty-two cents and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents, major homes.
This is the company that monitors the water system for us with the chillers plants for our system. This amount is, uh, for the last few years, it's been the same, but this year, uh, it's about a four percent increase. There's also a recommendation from our maintenance, Lamar Newburn, who oversees all this, to strongly go back with it even there isn't. Even though there is an increase because of the level of service they have provided for us over the years.
Just one of those routines?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the? We'll move on to the next item, tab number seventeen? Tab number seventeen, authorization to approve the structure proposed five oh one C six to bring on this Douglas County Travel and Tourism Corporation. And to engage Malden and Jenkins to seek our IRS designation upon legal creation of said entity and authorize the chairman to sign our related documents. Attorney Bernard, is that yours?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if we're going forward on this or not. This was a carryover from the last meeting and had, uh, something to do with the discussion collateral to item seven.
Actually, this is different from item seven. This is sort of similar, but this is moving forward in twenty twenty and beyond. Uh, seven was fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
It got, I, I think at the last meeting, it sort of got shut down on whether or not y'all are gonna use a third-party entity going forward or gonna have our own. So I don't, legal is ready to do whatever this board tells it to do.
We had a process from Malden and Jenkins. It was about a thousand, I think. We sort of estimated five thousand just in case. But I think what Jennifer got was a thousand to submit the status, I mean, submit the, uh, all paperwork stuff to, uh, our, yeah.
First, Attorney Bernard.
Yeah, hi. And to the county attorney's point, I think you tied this to the discussion for the prior item, so you don't move on this tomorrow to, you guys collectively resolve this. But give, give assurance, being able to spend the money by, in the year is not very hard. If anybody's been in, um, PR, public relations, marketing, advertising, basically, you're just, a third-party entity is basically engaging somebody over time and saying, listen, ten months, you need to spend some money. It, it, this ain't that difficult. So I don't want anybody to think that we're boxed on this. This, this is not difficult. Uh, you, you basically engage someone like any other consultant, any other professional services, any other attainment type of situation. This is not hard. Uh, but I, I think that this needs to be thought through. So to, to the county administrator, I would like to tie this one to the prior one, um, you know, wait until we make a decision. But the intent is that there can be multiple agencies out there that can fulfill this. And that's really where we started with this, was to give other people an opportunity to expand the status quo and allow other people to participate. Not the same old people getting, uh, the concentration of the money. It was, the whole point was to diversify the spend, right? So I, I know there was a lot of messaging going on over the past three weeks, but if you were paying attention, it's been pretty consistent, at least from my position. Uh, which is, okay, open it up, let more people have a, a chance to participate. It didn't have to be one, um, imperial view of how to market things. Let's bring other people in here and allow them to promote it. So that's really what it was about. But here to your point, uh, county attorney, to your point, I'd just say, Madam Chair, you'll entitle this to whenever you, um, decide. So no action on this until the other is decided.
Okay.
And I, I'm gonna address the legal. Uh, the five oh one C six is something we're gonna need going forward, right?
If you're gonna spend the hotel motel tax through an internal, through the, uh, ARM source as opposed to a third-party party source.
So we're.
Either way, it has to be a five oh one C six.
Yeah, it's gotta be a five one C six. The question is, you go get a third, a third-party five one C six, or do you create one yourself? This would be creating one for going forward.
But we, we need it in order to spend the hotel motel tax. I don't see why we should delay that. That has nothing to do with the four hundred, uh, three ninety-nine. I think we need to proceed with this because it's gonna take a while to get that status. Even after you submit the paperwork, it will probably take months. And why, why would we wanna delay it if we've got to have it going forward? With that, I just feel bad.
We just wanna get that stopped. I mean, it has nothing to do with the three ninety-nine. So what are your thoughts? I'm just trying to, Commissioner Parkin, is there a hint on you?
Yeah, I, I think we should go ahead and at least get started with it because we don't know how long it's gonna take. That's just my position. We, you know, it would, it would at least give us a, a pathway going forward to spend that. My, I do have a question, essentially, you have the floor to me. The, um, the appointments for the board of directors for this?
Yeah, so what's in there is just proposed. That's what, uh, the city of Kelton uses?
I got it, if you want me to read it. The, the initial board was, uh, it's gonna be, uh, was gonna, in the draft is the chairman and the county administrator and the finance director. But there's gonna be seven board seats. Uh, the others will be filled. And we do have to modify this language about the stagger to get there because it's not clear whether three replace by seven. New members are the three, or, or added to by four. And that's when we need to get direction from y'all. But the four would come by votes of this body as recommended by, uh, the, the entity, the five oh one C six. No worries, the county board commissioners appoint members to this body. So that language in the draft of articles, uh, of, of the bylaws is a little bit loose, but we need some direction from y'all as to what y'all want.
Okay, so is it your intent to get with us before we proceed with this? Cause whether we discuss it or vote on it, this needs to be.
It needs to be cleaned up. We just need direction. Um, the reason why we, well, if we go forward this manner, and I'll, let me just say this, if you decide not to use it, you can incorporate something that stays a novelty until it's actually, uh, utilized. But our concern is, how do you want people put on this board and where they come from? But right now, it reads this way, "The board of directors shall be composed of seven voting members. Three of the seven members shall own or be employed by business in Douglas County hotel sector. Three of the seven shall own or be employed by business in Douglas County attraction sector. One of the seven members shall be a voting member at large. The initial board director shall be comprised of chairman, Douglas County Board of Commissioners, county administrator and the director of finance. The Douglas County Board of Commissioners shall appoint directors to serve in place of initial board directors with the substitute directors having all the powers and authority conferred upon the initial board of directors. Douglas County Board of Commissioners shall appoint four additional directors to satisfy the initial, uh, remaining vacancies. So three would remain, you had four to get seven. All appointed directors shall be made by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners with the recommendation of DCTT." But that's not science.
So actually, based, if you look at section one, we're just talking about the seven. So, once you get to that point, the initial board, which is what's proposed, is made chairman and the finance director, would no longer be on the board.
Well, that's what.
The numbers gonna add up because you got, three have to be employed by business in county hotel sector. So three shall own or be employed by business in Douglas County, that's six. And then one of the seven others shall be a voting member at large, so that's seven.
We agree. That's why we need direction.
Yeah.
The, the, the section one and section two are inconsistent intentionally to show y'all what's out there and then tell us what you want. This has not been submitted to anybody other than y'all.
All right.
Thank you for explaining that. Are you?
So we still in this mindset, basically, we just need to get started, get, get the application process moving forward. Is that what you're implying or?
Well, yeah, but we need to decide on how this board is made up, right? If you decide you want Ken and the legal team to put together the corporate structure for now.
The board of commissioners, is that what you're saying?
The board would need to direct us, we've already, we need direction on the organizational, how it would work.
Structure.
Structure. That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, that, that's why I was, I'm, I'm trying to be assertive that, do, do you not get how this has to play out? Which is, okay, guys, you can, there's some material things that you need to decide on. And ti, you, time is not against you. You, we guys know we can make a decision, but you need to be thoughtful about, now you know what y'all saying. So the question becomes, okay, so you got this tourism commission out there that's not attached to the current person that's running it in economic development. Like, okay, so what do y'all say? If y'all set this in motion, you gonna shift all the money to this new entity? What happens to that commission? You have not thought through this. This is a real discussion, which is like, okay, guys, I'm gonna sort of let this play out. And that's all I'm trying to, like, you, we're so focused on, we gotta spend the money, like, that's the least of our problems. There's plenty of professional service firms out there that can take this without a heartbeat. The hard part is the structural part. This is a fundamental shift and it's, to your point, this is something that you inherited, which is a law process uncovered. She digging in the box like, what is this? And it turns out like, okay, oh my God, this is, this is not the cleanest thing. So we're trying to multi, we're, we're trying to clean it all up, so it is not being critical, but please understand what we're saying. You set that in motion, why do you need that tourism commission? And you get the, the percentage money they got, if we're gonna create this new entity. You got a staff member that's sitting over here on the economic development that's not tied to that person. So do y'all see what y'all, this, like, how y'all gonna clean this up? Right? And that's the part where I want us to, I'm, I'm trying to suggest, y'all think through this. And we're so focused on the spin that we haven't thought through the bigger picture, which is how are you going to be organizing, how are you going to organize this function? And that's my concern, that do y'all not see that train wreck coming? If you set this new entity in place, what that means for the existing structure that's out there on its own? I don't know none of these people, they not my friends, this is business. I'm saying this is about to wreck. Cause ain't nobody having that conversation. It says, okay, now what if the board commissioner shifts? They say now, you're, you're gonna put Colin up under this new group and then now they get all the money, what happens to the, like, y'all thought through this? That's why I, when you, when the county administrator asked me last week, I was like, discussion, um, let my peers catch up on this. Right? So this was, that was my, my, my suggestion was, y'all need to really think through this. And that was my only point. Now, all these issues are tied to things that have just been out there. And respectfully, and you always hear me say it to my peers, y'all get to think through this. This wasn't a shotgun. The spend is easy. The spend is easy. Get this right. That's all I'm asking. Get this right. I go, I know you gotta go.
Um, Madam Chair, so Commissioner Robinson, just?
Yeah.
So the history and tourism commission, which is essentially the museum, we have a contract with the museum. So they get a portion of the tourism product development, portion of the hotel motel tax. So does the, uh, CAC. So the tourism product development, which is TPD, is totally separate. That can go to five oh one C threes. So the TCT, which is tourism conventions and trade shows, so that percentage then has to go to a five oh one C six. So they're two separate items. So there, as far as the money we're talking about for the TCT, that does not affect the, uh, history and tour commission, which is the museum. So it doesn't affect.
But if, if the board decided to recalibrate, we're only required to spend by percentages based on categories. Who we award within there, uh, what, what if the board decides to rethink it? Are we bound by that?
You can't, well, as far as the percentages there provided by state.
I said percentages, but, but who gets that?
Yeah, as long as it's the five, from the TCT portion, as long as it's a five oh one C six, that's up to the board.
Hey, that was my point. So we're, we're, you're not bound by what's there. Just think through it. That's all I was asking, do y'all understand? Now, that, that's it. We're good. You answered the question? So again, if there's some implications, if the board decides to go in a different direction, then what's the status quo? Do you understand what that impact is? And it may not be take any action, but you're setting up a brand-new entity. Like, okay, so there's a, a finite funding source. Where's it gonna come from? If everything is already a hundred percent, that means you're gonna take from something to fund this. That's like, have you thought through that? You a hundred percent loaded already, but independent of the category, independent of the percentage, you're one hundred. You're creating a new entity with a new board. And like, okay, now how y'all gonna do this? Who, who gets the short end of that musical chair? And that's the part, like, okay, think through this, guys. I'm not going any other way. I mean, no specific way. I just want y'all to be sensitive to, okay, I don't know how this is gonna play out. I'm just standing in my corner. But I, that's all I'm saying. I think you guys now see it. That's all I was suggesting. Make this discussion only. Y'all, make sure y'all clear on what this is and then again, you bring it back whenever y'all, I mean, we're good.
Okay, board commissioners, I was under the impression this item, and maybe I'm way out in the left field, that we're looking at something going forward, not the three ninety-nine we focusing on this day. Just going forward. But if, if we need, uh, like, we still need some additional massage in there. Vice Chair, it sounds like you're not quite there yet.
But they're talking about the board members that I have no, I, I didn't, I haven't even taken that up. You're asking me to appoint board members. Well, I'm gonna point.
I'm not sure if the, the county attorney was gonna take any board members. I think initially he was gonna just use those people that you're talking about yourself.
The first three to get it off the ground, if, if and when it gets activated, then we. The first three to get it off the ground, if and when it gets activated, then we, we need to know if that's all right and going forward, where do y'all wanna be as far as appointments, so that can be in articles.
I think all the thing...
Articles of, that's actually the bylaws, excuse me, bylaws, yes.
And the reason you need those three names so you can tee it off and get it stopped, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, here's the, here's sort of the drill. We could go with the three and amend Articles or Bylaws at any time. But what I find is that the Board needs to set the direction and tone of what that looks like ahead of time so that we write the words the right way.
Okay.
So you have adequate amount of whatever control it is that you want for appointments. Once the train pulls out, the question is, have we gotten everybody covered as far as the power of appointment?
Okay.
So that's where we need direction. I can set it up with just the Chairman and Mark and the Finance Director as a labor run. But if you want to control appointments, the methodology of doing that's very important at the initial outstart.
Okay. Sounds like we'll need just a little more time on this particular one. Okay, we will. It sounds like it needs to be very concrete. All right, we'll move on to the next item. Board, Authorization to Approve Change Order Number 5 and Number 6 for the load of order Solutions for Public Safety P-25 Radio Systems, System and the Chair to sign all related documents pending final legal review.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief Spencer.
Yes, ma'am. Two change orders. The first one, change order number five, basically, the county gets credited $9,500 for an early payment. That's added to the $75,501.2 that we got in change order number three. So all that's because we paid stuff early. Mr. Peacock did a good job in negotiating that, so that's got us some money there. Change order number five, we had an initial credit, savings credit of $185,000. We've been spending that down on the different change orders that we needed to do to complete this project. The SHPO, the State Historical Preservation Office, the folks that are helping us with our tower repair plan. In order to satisfy what they are requiring, it's gonna cost us $54,250. That's for those 300 surveys that will be done. And then the other $18,000 is for moving the Osteo Gas Repeater, Duplexer, new lines, coax and all that on our tower. That is on their property. They didn't charge us anything for that, we're not charging anything for this.
Okay. Questions from the Board or...
I think...
Commissioner Mitchell?
So with all that being said...
Where are you staying?
Yeah, where are we? Savings or break even, or we came in budget?
We have $24,185.60 left on that, after doing everything on change order number six. And $85,001 on our credits to Motorola.
So roughly about $100,000.
And we're, in order to get everything that's needed, we're, that doesn't go away when we stand up.
Okay, so that $100,000 will go away with the 54 and...
No, we have the credit now, but there...
Yeah, we've got credit now.
But there are things that we have in the pipeline that we know we're gonna spend that money down.
Okay.
So don't, don't think that you're gonna have a pot of money at the end of the day.
Got you, got you, got you. So there's, you know, one time we was looking really great on the savings side of it, you know, coming in the way...
And we still are, we still are.
Yeah, well, we had the ship though, we didn't know about.
Well, I know, I know a couple of situations where, but I guess I was trying to get closer to the bottom line possibility.
We will be under a bunch of, at the end of the day, how, how much they need, roughly.
Until...
Yeah.
I really don't know until we get all this done. Because if they hit a snag, you know, for instance, if the coverage is not what is expected, you know, they're gonna have to fix that, they're gonna have to fix that.
That's their expense, but...
But that's a their expense.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, I thought that would be a their expense.
But like I said, until everything's said and done...
Oh, I know, I know, and that's why I don't count on it.
Right.
I mean, you know, but in the beginning, it was a nice, healthy savings that we were looking at in the beginning.
And I will say this, we're actually doing the, they call it subscriber training, end user training, started today. So we are very close to go to being there.
Live.
Live, so that's a good thing.
And see the lives out of it, so I know we won't get the full live treatment till spring of next year. But even when we're live with it between now and spring, will we still keep the other one online to ensure we got connections? Or once we turn it off, we've turned it off?
We will not turn the old one off until we're assured that the new one is likely, likely to start.
Both, you know, to the end, okay. What kind of checks would that have on the old radio systems that we have with both versus the new radios and stuff that they may have in a heavy, you know, you got a megahertz, you know, what is that, most one we using this time around versus the old one?
Yeah, well, we know for a fact that just the single tower in that Douglasville will activate all the lock alerts up in all of our fire stations.
Got it.
So we know that, and that's just with one tower.
Got it.
We've got eight other towers that will be online, so...
We should be...
We should not have an issue at all.
Okay, that's what I'm doing to make sure, you know, I mean, just kinda how one would work with the other, even though the other one is outdated and we're jumping on the cob and all these guys, kinda what kinda affect transitioning from one to the other, you know, but you'll have both on?
Yeah, for, until we make sure that the 800 system's gonna work.
Got it.
And then we'll transition over, in the first month or so, we'll probably be working just off corn or anything.
Mr. ...
The walk talkies.
Mr. ...
And then we'll put the mobiles in the trucks and in the stations and then...
Got it.
So, but works out and we appreciate all the support and information.
This is a nice little interesting journey, but it's...
It's been a long journey.
Yes, okay, I yield back.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item. Thank you so much, Chief.
And I'd like to use, we got a presentation due to 12 o'clock.
Yes, absolutely. The last four belong to our Director of Purchasing, let's see how quickly he can...
Just a little quick, Madam Chair, number 19, we're not ready. We're still in discussions with, Gary's still in discussions with the architect. So yes, that one needs to be made up again.
Okay.
Sorry, this is a discussion...
Gary, so we're gonna take this, number 19, and we just won't put it on the agenda for tomorrow. Number 20, Authorization to Award a Contract to Headley Construction Corporation for construction of the Lithia Springs Senior Center at a cost of $4,197,000 and to be funded by the 2016 SLOSP sponsors recommended by Parks and Recreation Oversight Committee and authorized the Chairman to sign all related documents. Director Peacock?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh-oh.
I haven't read it. We advertised the construction of the Senior Center back in October. We received the bids in, we received six different proposals. The lowest one was from Headley Construction for $4,197,000. There was a, there was an evaluation committee that looked at these and we are recommending, and it also was discussed with the Parks and Rec Committee, and recommendation coming from that committee is that we award the construction of the Senior Center to Headley Construction Company. Again, for the low bid amount of $4,197,000.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? I'll come and vice chairman of the Board.
Yeah, I, Dr., and again, we recently passed a new procurement process, or policy. We're trying to become more streamlined going forward. So I'd be curious to test our process, our valuation process against our new policy. And I haven't looked at this, I'll yield my, if the Chair of the procurement committee has an opinion. But I guess, this is not for the Parks and Rec Committee to have to even consider. It really has to do with our purchasing and just general administration. How did y'all handle that? Did y'all make it conform to the new procurement policy that we recently had? How did it test out? Did you test against that policy that we enacted?
As far as the DVE requirement? So what was the DVE requirement on these?
10%.
That was 10%.
I'm sorry, no, it was 15%.
15%. And they all, all of them said that they would be the 15% DVE.
And that's really, as far as that new policy, that was really...
That's the only thing...
That's really the only thing that would have anything to do with, because they're all over the $250,000 mark.
Okay, okay. All right, we'll move on to the next, um, Commissioner.
I do, I do wanna acknowledge that you did do it because I'm looking at it, so I did wanna, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I'm looking at what they are putting on there right now. Thank you.
So as far as that item goes, on the, that was the Senior Center, correct? So total estimated cost, this is with construction, design, the estimated part is the furnishing, so the furniture is discussed within, $4,799,500. And the budget estimate was 5.3 million, so that's about half a million dollars under budget.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, ma'am.
But we are, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, you probably don't say real...
Madam Chair, but, so we are getting the whole breakout, is it in here or not?
It's in here.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure that, I didn't look at it, but I just wanted to make sure that the breakout was in there.
Yeah, no, I've laid it off there.
Okay, cool, good, good. I yield, okay.
Just one other thing, I wanna make sure that we don't have as many change orders. Because what oftentimes happens is people come under, but then we have, we're hit with all these change orders that then brings the price back up. So how can we, you know, control that?
So we try not to have them, but sometimes we have them, sometimes we don't, I mean, it's tough.
You go after terms, but that's why we stress, I mean, not using that term in our meetings. But again, that's, and I'll leave the jump, yeah, but that way you know the numbers are the numbers. Anything outside of that number, it's on there, so...
And is that the way we structure the contracts, attorney, or not?
I was trying to, it wasn't being seen there, right, of course. Well, Martin, engineer from Georgia Tech probably knows better than I do, but we did beat all of them this weekend, engineers, so, but anyway. Madam Carson, I think it depends on what kind of contracts you want. Obviously, you know, whether you do a guaranteed maximum price and all these other things, it's gonna depend on the words that are buried in four or 500 pages of lawyer stuff. And so you can scope something out, but when you flashback it, if it's not perfect, and it never, never is, you're then gonna have change orders, and that's the problem. So, you know, in building the construction of schools back in the day, we used guaranteed maximum price on those major contracts, but it really requires expertise pre-contract and understanding the scope, specification down to how, how many inches off the ground is the electric outlet or whatnot. Because when you move it six inches, you hit stud and suddenly you got this, that and the other. So we are, what we really wanna do is provide as much safety net as possible, knowing that there is no perfect contract that can't be interpreted by different people differently. So I don't know that there's a direct answer to yourself. I think the fact of watching it's important. You also want to have a relationship with vendors over a period of time, hopefully, because if they're interested in you for the long haul, they tend to, will want to have not as many change orders because they know they won't get the next deal potentially. And maybe part of the valuation system is history, you know, what's the history? It's just, it's a grading point. So the question, Bill and Dawn are experts on the, but if your bid tabulation is based on price, assuming, assuming it's a, it's not a requirement, you know, if it's a, if it's under the state law and it's a road project, you gotta go with the guarantee, whoever's the lowest bidder. So you have to prequal them very hard. So what is the criteria for prequalification? Not just have you done this work, but his, you know, it's evaluation, what the committee decides to do and the Board and directing them, the committee to evaluate in prequalification. But once they meet that threshold, they're in if they're the lowest number. That's one way, but Bill, I mean, team probably knows better than I do. Mark, I know you know...
We try our best not to have change orders. Just like on the next one was coming up, Gary, that came, if I remember serving the record, there's a rock clause in there for $88,000. You know, if we hit rock out there, it's possible we can pay there some funds, which would be a change order. Now, we'll do all we can to avoid the rock, there is rock out there, by the way. To avoid it, possibly do some, you know, some field changes in order to avoid it, to not pay them. And then there's other cases where we have change orders that are positive, I mean, they're positive for us. Like the ones with radio system, we're working on positive change order with credit.
Okay.
I'll just say...
Did you yield the S? Commissioner, I think she did, did you yield?
I yield, okay.
And I'm just gonna, it's tough, I mean, the turnkeys are ideal, but the unforeseen, the unknowns, I mean, you'll get stuck with it if they start digging and trying to lay out the whole foundation and then they hit rock. So do we, I mean, I think that happened with the animal shelter, hit rock.
Lots of rock.
Yeah, and lots of rock. And we had to kinda dig to kinda even get the sewer system kinda worked out. But we just have to dig in and say, hey, here we go. I mean, I don't think we can go back and charge to the company, you have to help, you can't charge them because they didn't dig far enough to say, when they did the testing, the soil testing, and I don't know if they, this is feasible not to say, you should have known that, you knew the rock was there. So it's not for this $50,000 that you need now to kinda get to the rock situation.
Yeah, it depends on how you word the contract, but that will be considered unclassified excavation, which is not included.
Right, right.
You can not include it because it's an unknown.
It's ideal, it's ideal, but I'm just saying...
I just think about it because the citizens are listening to us and so we want them to know that we are physically responsible for their money because every time we get a change order, it affects something else within that. And for Parks and Recs, we already have such a small percentage.
You're right, that's why we try to, we stretch, yes, 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 yes. You on that, on that committee, you know that, that little bit of money we got, and we trying to, you know, bring up some other projects, you know, from the backend. But that's why we always stated, do not take that money, and you didn't make the last, don't take that money now. I think you gotta save it, just go out there and spend it now and bring up other projects. Let's kinda get through this one because of the unforeseen stuff that could be, so, but yes.
Thank you.
I don't know who was yielding, but I...
I was like, thank you. Act number 21, we're gonna move on to the next item. Authorization to Award a Contract of Integrated Construction for construction of the Deer Lake Tennis Complex at a total cost of $887,337.42 and to be funded from 2016 SLOSP sponsors recommended by Parks and Recreation Oversight Committee and authorized the Chairman to sign all related documents. Director Peacock?
Yes, ma'am. Same process that we went through with the Senior Center. We issued an RFP, we received four responses back on October the 18th. They ranged from $885,000 up to $1,190,000. We are recommending the second lowest proposal for $887,337.42 to integrated construction. Even though they're not the low bidder, they were $2,000 higher than the low bidder. They have extensive experience in this type construction and the low bidder did not provide us with any indication that they had any experience doing this type work with tennis courts and the engineering that's required and different aspects of the project. And again, this was discussed at length with the Parks and Recreation Oversight Committee, and they are recommending that integrated construction be chosen for this project.
Any questions from the Board or Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yeah, again, this is Deer Lake, and it's something that obviously I've been following, make sure that what y'all put out there is quality. The animal shelter should not be... Um, the animal shelter should not be the signature building of this major park for the county, uh, we will, well, you always have to still acknowledge history, that it, it makes sense to make decisions going forward, so I, I want you guys to, to fulfill that commitment that we made, make sure that whatever you put out there is level, that you don't compromise, um, in how y'all are approaching this, uh, again, so I'm looking at, like, that animal shelter is five million dollars compared to the community center, like, look at the comparison, so I'm looking at this, so I'm putting it to the side. So, look at this million-dollar, um, tennis complex, and I'm hearing that we're discounting history. Now, I understand why we would wanna do the transportation center, I don't know, five million dollars, whatever, okay, something that's big and something that has a lot of structural differences, but we're talking about a tennis court complex, for the sake of conversation, is this not an opportunity for somebody to, to, to begin to grow? I don't know the answer, I wanna ask the committee, did y'all look at this, um, could this, could the low person have gotten opportunity, did they team? I don't know the questions that was asked, but like, okay, so, but they had the lowest bid. They had the lowest bid, I'm assuming that they, they conformed with the DVE. Well, it does, yeah, I guess it's over the two fifty, so it conforms with, I'm assuming your test has been done. So, why did the lowest bid not get it? The whole point is to get history, uh, and giving opportunity, again, this is not a major structure, which I know you could perhaps pause, but it's like sidewalks and tennis courts, like, in the engineering world, well, how complex was it? So, I, I don't know, it just makes me, I'm gonna respect my peers, whatever you guys decide, I'll, I'll flow with, then I at least get to ask the question, to keep it honest. Didn't we, why did we discount that lowest bid? For the, it's only a million bucks, it's less than a million. Why did whoever this is get an opportunity to participate and get something under their bill, and get the experience, um, versus, again, concentration and get history, but I'm always careful that you go to history, that becomes status quo, that means that there's no new, newness, there's no new.
It's, it really wasn't based on history, this was based on the experience that was given to us in record, that was, uh, submitted. Uh, we, just as, if we were looking for a plumber, we would go find the plumber with the most experience, and that could, would be in the best interest of the county, and that's what we did in this circumstance. We evaluated the documents and had chosen, and are recommending to this board, the firm that can provide the best benefit to the county.
So I, I appreciate that, so, and I'm assuming that the criteria and, um, experience was a quantified, you put a number on it.
Yes, that's what we did.
And that built up to some point, I'm, I'm keeping it simple for the sake of the conversation, I don't wanna make this long. Uh, but again, I'm just, if, if the committee, my peers, if y'all are comfortable, that the lowest bid should not get this, I'm going, I'm going with you guys. I'm just asking a question, if I wasn't in that room and don't wanna get into it.
And it was discussed in committee, and the recommendation to go to the second highest bidder came out, committee.
So let me try and get you, my peers wanna weigh in on this, I'd love to hear y'all's opinion, I'm, I'm gonna go with whatever comes out of it, so, I was really looking for my peers to say something, but I yield, I'm good.
Okay, also, I'm just looking, um, it seems like you've already built in opportunity for demolition, you run into rock, is that what?
Demolition has already occurred, uh, with the old tennis court, I'm sorry, um, yes, what are the answers?
So if you add, if you add up everything, so this contract, which is eight eighty-seven, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, plus the thirty thousand dollars for the design they cost, plus the fifty thousand for demolition that it cost, we've already done that. Your total is nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars, which is around seventy thousand dollars under budget.
Okay. But you're good, give me a little opportunity to get to one, okay. All right, let's move on to the last, and I'll list that, number twenty-two, authorization to award a contract to Rayland and Associates in preparation for the construction of the Boundless Waters Multi-Purpose Recreation Center at a cost of seven million, one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, and to be funded through twenty sixteen SPOS funds, as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Oversight Committee, and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents. Director Peacock.
Yes, ma'am, same process as we've discussed in the last two, RFPs were developed and, uh, distributed to a large number of firms. We received five responses back, the low response was from Rayland and Associates at seven million, one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, uh, and they ranged up then from, to a high of eight million, one hundred seventy thousand dollars. Uh, we spent several, had several, uh, telephone meetings with Rayland and Associates, uh, due to the fact that their price, uh, the next, uh, lowest price was, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars above theirs. Uh, so we went back and had them review their proposal for completeness. Uh, we actually had them send it back to their, um, their evaluator, estimator, I'm sorry, that estimates their projects, to make sure that they had included everything, and they've come back and assured us that they did. Uh, their, um, view of it is that they have a very, they included a very thin margin on this project, because they wanna do work in Douglas County. They also believe they have some, uh, relationships with vendors and suppliers that allow them to pay less for the, um, products or the materials that will be required to construct this, um, uh, this location. Um, again, they've, they've given us assurances that they're able to do this at the price that they've submitted, um, and we thoroughly discussed it within the Parks and Rec Committee, and the recommendation is to approve, or to, uh, to award the contract to Rayland and Associates for seven million, one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
So can you get questions from the board, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yeah, I mean, again, I go back to not to exceed, we did that with the animal shelter, uh, if in fact, my, my fellow peers have a concern, put, put, put a condition. We, we, even though you didn't do it in scoping, we still did that with the animal shelter, as a board, as condition, we said not to exceed. And you were very serious about taking five million dollars off that general fund, see, I'm showing you, you can put a condition on there. It was out of the general fund, we said not to exceed, it was non-negotiable, we like, yes, but see, with the SPOS, we've been a little bit more loose, well, we got like, okay, not that it mattered, but I'm saying that, well, just like that general fund, you didn't have the money. Like, okay, you're gonna burn five million dollars of the general fund, it was like, not to exceed. It was conditioned, but I'm okay if y'all wanna use the SPOS and play with that, that's fine, but I just, but for those who didn't know, I wanna get that contact. But I'm coming back to Rayland, okay, I, I guess they, they have quite success, since you brought it up, lot of success over in the school board, they do a lot of work over there, so they're expanding over here to the county, I get the game, they're trying to open this up, they're taking a low bid, um, sort of getting here, smooth it out, and wanna show you that we can be a partner to you, I mean, I, I get it, um, and, and so I, um, hmm, okay, um, you know, there's a concern, I, I get what they're doing. And I, on this one, it's like, okay, uh, they, they're acknowledging that they're taking it, a razor-thin margin on this, you know, we, we want your business, we wanna show you that we're dedicated, it's easy to get my business, but can you keep my business? Are they gonna be able to fulfill what they say they're gonna do? I don't know, I, I don't know their, I mean, I don't know anything about them, um, perhaps from what I perceive from afar. I'm good, whatever the committee thinks that it should be, if you wanna leave it as is, I'm good, um, to the full board, I'm, I'm fine.
Mark, do you wanna give the total?
Yeah, so madam chair, so, construction, uh, which is, was seven million, one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. The design was three hundred and forty thousand, bringing the total of seven million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars currently. Um, the budget was eight point four million, so that's about a little over a million under budget. So if you add all three of those big projects, uh, the tennis court, senior center, and the multi-purpose recreation center, uh, we're about one point six million dollars under budget.
So, so to, to that point, and I, I make this my earlier SPOS, and to my, my peers, you got a savings. You, you're talking about all these unknowns that we don't know, you don't wanna cap it, I'm gonna highly recommend it, you don't go down and pull stuff from the bottom of that list, and pull it forward. No, 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 no.
We talked about that.
No, no, this, this is one of those, it's your call, but just like with that cash flow, it's about the cash flow, it's not that you can't get to the projects. It's like, can you count, that don't blow the budget? I'm good on the project, I'm just like, as long as you know, now you got the capacity, be able to relate to it on a monthly basis, it's just lining up, if it lines up, it lines up. I mean, but please don't talk about my intent, you know, about like, okay, let me show you what, how you bought, that it was flawed, that like, as long as y'all got the math right, just, just don't pull the schedule and forget the cash, that was my only point, so we talked about this morning, so this is not an indictment or a bad conflict, it was like, I submit to you guys, figure this thing out, just be sensitive, and that's all it was, but please, I wanna clarify what my intent was, like, as long as you got it right. Helen, how you?
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson, you, you're looking at it.
No, no, I, I was gonna say something, but I think you said enough.
Yeah, okay, and, and this conversation's definitely been refreshing today to hear the numbers coming in, another thing will be intentional going forward. However, you know, we, we don't wanna just, there's an elephant in the room, and we have two parks out there, which is Fair Play and Bill Arkin, we've been talking about those parks, and, uh, this group worked very, very hard to make sure that these numbers come in correctly, so we can capture those parks, and I'm saying this for the public, and the goal was, uh, again, I've worked in surgery all my life, and all I know is to talk about that. When my patient went in, we wanted a success story, we didn't want you to come out, uh, dead, we wanted you to be alive, and we did that. So today, I, I, I look at this as a success story, um, again, we, we're not gonna push, we're gonna look at the money, we're gonna throttle, we, we wanna make sure we have some conditions built in, I agree with Commissioner Carthage, those change orders eat up everything real quick. I like the idea of what you said, Vice Chairman Robinson, not to exceed, if we could put it on there, just not to exceed, because then that places some parameters. I believe you all already, we've already bid it, not bid it out, but you already got, what, what have we done with those two parks, Mark? Uh, Fair Play, which is, uh, in District Four, and, and, uh, Bill Arkin Three, you have, you bid it out, what have you done, do you have?
So we're in the process of evaluating the bids, talking to the low bidder, um, to make sure that the bid's still good. It has to go back through Parks and Rec, 'cause Parks and Rec never, Parks and Rec Committee never approved those-
Right.
Or made a recommendation on those, um, so that's where we're at, and also, uh, Mr. Gable, the more and outer bellies confirmed the cash flow, so the cash flow works for, to proceed with those two, right?
Okay.
Confession stands.
Thank you. All right, uh, attorney, anything else on the board, for, for executive session, so y'all can get some lunch. Uh, Attorney Bernard, do we have a motion to, do we, do we need to go into executive session, first of all?
Madam Chair, we do need executive session for personnel and relevant-
You see, Commissioner Bidge, like, I was-
Motion, thank you.
Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session? Oh, okay, you second, all in favor, please, in the, if I raise any right hand, five of, thank you all so much. Thank you all so much. Any other discussion, just wanted to remind you, tomorrow, we also have Douglas County Youth Commission that'll be coming before the Board of Commissioners. Uh, tomorrow, we have this little exercise that'll be presented to the Board of Commissioners tomorrow, so I just wanted you to be aware of that. Any other questions from the boards?
No, ma'am.
Concerned, with that being said, this meeting is adjourned.